Since we can clip that off the beginning. Being that there's a quorum, we'll call the City of Manassas Common Council meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is the Constitution of the United States of America. Under God, I give this vote to the Republican Party.
Can we have the roll, please?
Alderman Nichols? Here. Alderman Taylor? Alderman Sevenick?
Here.
Alderman Langdon?
Here.
Alderman Schmidt?
Here.
Alderman Tomgady?
Here.
Alderman Tedgady?
Here.
Alderman Repella?
Here.
Looks like Alderman Taylor had just joined. All are present.
Here. Oh, James is there.
Thank you. Item D is a temporary suspension of the rules. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevenick?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to temporarily suspend the rules of the Common Council on the mayor so that we can use our electronic devices for this teleweb conference.
Second.
We have a motion as second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Seeing none, item E is a public hearing for a special use permit for an electronic message sign at 1515 Appleton Road. Director Schrader, would you be able to give us a quick synopsis of what's going on?
I would love to. So what we have here is a special use permit for an electronic message center at 1515 Appleton Road. So this is the existing Sitco gas station on the corner of Appleton Road and Midway. This is turning hands over to a proposed to be a new BP gas station. And with that, they're looking at updating their signage. So again, the existing signage is kind of a pylon sign, and they're bringing that into performance by making that existing sign a monument sign, putting a new face on the entire building or on, excuse me, on the entire sign, replacing the gas fuel pumps with digital signs, as well as putting an electronic message center on that. There are electronic message centers on the entire corridor. In addition, we did recently update our special use or our electronic message center sign ordinance, which does require the special use permit, which is why it is in front of the Common Council tonight.
With that, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on that item?
Andrew Zwill Taylor, 525 Broad Street. I am confident that this approval will go forward. However, I did want to make a few comments. In general, the electronic messaging signs in the City of Manassas are actually relatively new. It was only from pressure from businesses that abutted or were neighboring towns and villages that had lesser restrictions that this came to be about in the City of Manassas. Furthermore, the intent was, or the hope was, that by allowing a business to replace their existing pole sign with a monument sign, that we would be decreasing the visibility and having not such an ominous factor along our commercial corridors. In fact, what's happening, and this is a perfect example, it appears that the pole sign that is currently there will be replaced with a monument sign that appears to be just as tall as the pole sign. So we are not gaining anything aesthetically by doing this. Furthermore, the code currently restricts certain elements of electronic signs, such as, let me see here, animation, chasing, flashing, scrolling, running messages, fade or other effects that depicts movement, or is intended to draw attention. All of the signs, especially on that intersection, do those things. And what else I think is a detriment is that many of them are in red, which anyone who normally would see it flashing red thinks it's an emergency situation. Furthermore, because this is a special use permit, it requires that the sign be turned off at nine o'clock at night and cannot be turned on again until six in the morning. So I'm questioning who in the world is going to go out there from community development to check and see if that's taking place? Because I doubt if it's being monitored at this point with any other signs. I just wanted to bring forward, I've had an issue with a lot of chronic signs, especially when they were allowed to be placed in residential districts if it was an institution. And the code needs to be reworded because it's extremely cloudy on that point regarding residential neighborhoods. But it's unfortunate that we've kind of gotten away from the incentive to remove a pole sign with a monument sign that is closer to the ground, and we're just basically replacing the pole sign with another pole sign that that lights up and flashes and is probably animated. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on that topic? Seeing no one else, we'll call the public hearing to a close, and we'll move on to the report of department head staff and consultants. We do have Nick from McMahon Associates here tonight to talk about the stormwater planning grant. I'm not sure if Nick needs to share his chair presentation. There you are, Nick. Do you need to do that?
I do.
Okay, let's see if I can do this. I just got showed the easy way how to do this earlier last week, so I think you can do it now.
Okay, so everyone can see it on the screen, correct? The presentation? So basically, the city is looking to apply for a stormwater planning grant from the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources. And the planning grant is basically intended to help the city work towards compliance with its municipal stormwater discharge permit through the DNR. So this grant program just helps provide funding, and we just need to identify those grant planning activities that we plan to undertake with the application and then submit it. So I'm just going to walk you through a little bit of the history here and what we're trying to use the grant for for this application. So basically, the Federal Clean Water Act basically requires that each state identify different water bodies that are not fishable or swimmable, basically that aren't meeting their designated uses due to certain pollutants that might be impairing that water body. For instance, the Fox River was listed for PCBs a while back. Fox River is also listed for phosphorus pollutants and sediment pollutants. Lake Winnebago is also listed for those similar type of pollutants. So part of what we're trying to utilize this grant for is not necessarily to address like a PCB pollutant, but more to address the phosphorus and sediment pollutants that might be related to some of those pollutants coming through the city's storm sewer system. So through the Federal Clean Water Act, there's been two TMDLs developed, which are total maximum daily loads. This one is for basically the area that runs from Lake Winnebago out to the Bay of Green Bay. All the red lines on this map are water bodies that are impaired by sediment and phosphorus, including the Fox River, Nina Slough, Mud Creek. Those would be the ones sort of near the city's corporate boundary. And then we also have the TMDL that was developed for the Upper Fox and Wolf River basins. This TMDL was recently approved by the EPA during 2020. And the one, basically, it's the part of the city that discharges to Lake Winnebago. So this is sort of the new TMDL and the one that we're sort of focused on with these, with this grant application and trying to figure out how to comply with the TMDL. So the TMDL is essentially implemented through the city's permit through the Wisconsin DNR. That permit was renewed in 2019, and those allocations for the sediment and phosphorus would be passed through that municipal stormwater permit. So I believe the city gets four years from 2020 to basically put forward a plan about how to address the phosphorus and sediment allocations within the Lake Winnebago part of the watershed. So this map depicts the City of Manassas corporate limits, and essentially, the city discharges, the orange areas would be discharging into Lake Winnebago, and then the yellow areas would be discharging into the Fox River system. So previously, we had completed planning for the Fox River portion of the of the city, because that TMDL was completed in 2012. But now with Lake Winnebago, TMDL being approved, and Lake Winnebago being challenged by phosphorus, it would be prudent to begin that process there, which would also help us with the compliance in the Fox River watershed as well. Some of the stormwater pollutants basically are carried or deposited on our streets, parking lots, roads, lawns, things like that. So then when it rains, that water or snow melts, the water flows across the surface of the ground, picks up those pollutants, whether it's dust from cars or tires wearing down, leaky vehicles, dust, pollen from trees, leaf debris from trees. So all those things end up on the pavement, and then our curb and gutter and storm sewer systems are very efficient at picking up both the stormwater runoff as well as the pollutants that might be picked up by that runoff. And the storm sewers then carry it oftentimes directly to the Fox River or Lake Winnebago without a lot of treatment. So part of this is to try to identify treatment techniques to treat that stormwater runoff before it does reach those water bodies. And the city certainly has some treatment facilities in place, particularly in our newer growth areas. But this is also looking at some of the parts of the city that have been developed for a longer period of time and maybe don't have, you know, some of those stormwater facilities constructed. So with our municipal stormwater permit through the state, we have different components to that. One is to educate the public about stormwater requirements and to engage the public in the stormwater requirements to try to have our program be as successful as possible. So those are basically the first two components. And then we have a list of discharge protection elimination. That's basically when it's not raining out, theory, our storm sewer discharges should, our storm sewer pipes shouldn't be discharging any water for maybe some sump pump or hydro flushing. So if we see a flow during a dry weather period, you know, we would try to screen for that and test it and try to figure out if there's anything bad that's in the water that could harm the water body. And then we have construction site erosion control and post-construction stormwater management. Those two are more or less geared towards the development community, just to make sure that they're putting up self fence and that we have our ordinances in place to prevent erosion. And then likewise, after the site is constructed or the subdivision, that there's appropriate stormwater facilities in place to treat that water and also provide some flood control. And then we also have municipal pollution prevention, which is more about the city's operations with its staff and just how we handle pollutants at our city garage site or other facilities, and just trying to do a good job in reducing pollutants from those facilities. And then we have the Stormwater Quality Management Plan, which is more or less where the TMDL kind of comes into play for the Fox River and Lake Winnebago with the sediment and phosphorus reductions that are needed. So this is a computer modeling exercise and where we need to identify how we would meet those reductions for the TMDL due to Lake Winnebago and Fox River, and kind of lay out a schedule, if you will, of how we're going to achieve compliance and how much time we need to achieve that compliance eventually. So the way when we talk about achieving compliance, there's a lot of different tools available to us to try to get there. You know, we do street sweeping in the city, which helps remove some of the pollutants in the curb line, you know, whether that's the debris from the leaves in the fall, or it could be grass clippings, or even pollen in the springtime. We also have underground structures, proprietary devices. That could be an underground detention facility, could be underground filters, things like that, where we have some space limitations. And then, you know, if we have a significant stream or shoreline erosion, that can be quantified. Though the city doesn't have a lot of grass wheels or filter strips, some communities do, and those those types of facilities can help with removing sediment and phosphorus. And then rain gardens or biofilter, which is a form of a rain garden where the stormwater gets filtered through the soil and gets cleaned up before it discharges into a pipe or a ditch. And then certainly the one that folks are pretty familiar with would be the wetlands and wet detention ponds that seem to be popping up in our newer growth areas. Those facilities certainly are oftentimes the workhorses, if you will, of a community stormwater program in combination with street sweeping and other practices. So at the end of the day, what we're looking to do is to submit this grant application to the DNR to help defray some of the costs to the city's rate pairs and working towards compliance with TMDL requirements. So through that grant, if we're successful in securing it, we would use it to update the city's post-construction stormwater ordinance to take into consideration the new phosphorus reductions that are needed for Lake Winnebago. And we would also then update the water quality management plan for the city's entire developed urban area. And again, the focus will be on Lake Winnebago, but what we do in the parts of the city that drain the Lake Winnebago will have benefits for us in the Fox River side, because Lake Winnebago is more challenged by phosphorus pollutant and the Fox River is more challenged by the sediment pollutant. So what we do in Winnebago will hopefully defray some of our costs, capital costs that we need to contend with in the Fox River system. And then we also want to update our storm system mapping, maybe do a conversion into GIS. Currently, the city's running that through CAD computerated design system instead of GIS, so that was to modernize that a little bit. And then due to our new facility out at the city garage, we'd like to update the stormwater pollution prevention plan for that facility, as well as perhaps another one in the city. And what that does is it just identifies those more hotspots, if you will, to be concerned with at the city-owned garages and storage yards, basically, so that we can satisfy that permit requirement with the DNR. And then we'd also like to just look at a stormwater plan for maybe one new or redevelopment area in the city. Maybe it's somewhere along the river front edge, some of the sites that we were talking about. So yeah, basically, this grant would help us propel us forward as a city as we work towards compliance with our permit responsibilities and to use that grant funding for that purpose.
Does anyone have questions for Nick? Alderman Gaddy?
Yes, thanks. Thanks, Nick. I'm just curious, what is the amount of the grant that we're looking for here? Or does it depend on certain things?
It depends on certain things. We haven't put paper to pencil on it yet. We're trying to, it's due, the grant application is due April 15th, and the resolutions and some of the letters of the support are sort of our first step on it, you know, where we identify what we're trying to use it for. But we haven't put together like budgetary numbers yet for the application itself. That'll come in the next two weeks or so, I would say.
Okay, well, good luck.
I guess I have a question for you, Nick. Being that the vast majority of both phosphorus and TSS come from ag land, is there anything that is changing with the requirements for ag? Right now on the Fox River portion, it looks like about 46% is coming from ag and 12 from urban areas for phosphorus and 65 and 22 for TSS. Why, why isn't there more attention on the larger polluter rather than the smaller polluter?
That would be probably DNR policy kind of things. I do believe the DNR wished that they could regulate the agricultural community a little bit more than what they do. But I think they're limited in their authority over the agricultural sources. So for that reason, they tend to focus their efforts on wastewater treatment plants and the urban stormwater components to it, because those entities have permits through the DNR, whereas the agricultural side does not necessarily.
Even if you add those two together, you're still not to the point of what ag contributes. And it could be done much more cheaply in the ag areas. So it just seems, we're going to be spending millions and millions of dollars here just in Manassas. So you can imagine what this is going to cost statewide when the main polluters are agricultural land. I would hope that we would do something to try to remedy that a little bit more and look at the cost effectiveness of this as well.
Yeah, no question agriculture is a significant contributor. There are tools out there, Mayor, to address agricultural, you know, but it kind of requires wastewater plants, urban communities and agricultural community kind of working toward that common goal. The challenge is always that it's sort of a voluntary thing for the agricultural partners or stakeholders, whereas the wastewater plants and the urban communities, a little bit more of a regulated situation or is a regulated situation. So but there are definitely tools that work together, just they have, there's challenges with it.
Okay. Anyone else have questions? Becky? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I know that the Fox River portion of the plan had an emphasis on stormwater detention ponds when we viewed that a few years ago. And we know that we don't have a lot of space for them. And any space that we use for them would be space taken off the tax roll in many cases. So I hope that we can fully investigate those bio biofilter options and look at how we might be able to enhance what we already have in the system to help with these requirements.
I think through the planning grant process, we can hold some workshops with council or the Public Works Board and kind of talk through these different types of systems and identify what makes sense both fiscally and socially, or tax base for the for the City of Manassas.
Thank you.
So when Laura does her presentation tonight, she could maybe talk a little bit about the underground facility that we're working on right now downtown, and how that could potentially be one of our solutions to use land for two different things than rather than just taking it off the tax rolls. It could still be parking or green space then as well. Seeing no one else, thank you, Nick. We appreciate it.
Thank you for having me.
And the next step is a resolution, I believe, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I will stop sharing my screen then, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, great. Thank you. And we do have Director McKinney here this evening as well to speak about COVID and vaccinations within the city.
Hi, everyone.
Here she is.
Yep, I need you to let me share my screen.
I have to turn the people who don't have their cameras on off, otherwise I can't tell who's talking. So I couldn't see you until you popped up that way.
There we go. Good. Well, hi, everybody. I'm very excited about tonight. I mean, we're starting to see the vaccine getting a little bit more widely available, and that's exciting news for all of us. Want to go through the case counts, however, because the reality is we're not out of the woods yet. We have 8,262 negative test results, 1,800 confirmed, 1,969 people have recovered, 104 hospitalizations, 19 fatalities, 27 active cases as of today, and 215 probable cases. And then if we're looking at the number of confirmed cases, we've gone up a bit in the last two-week period from 35 to 37 cases. And our case rate has, as a result, increased slightly from 199.9 to 211.3 cases per 100,000. That puts our activity level at high. We've been at high for quite some time. You can see, going back to August of last year, where we started out and how we climbed the mountain and came back down, probably, again, taking a little jump around just shortly after the new year. And then now we have gone down and then almost, actually, we were in the moderately high area and then kind of kicked it up just a little bit. So of course, this is a little concerning. We've spent so much time in the high and critically, very high and critically high range that I think sometimes when we get to the high range, we're feeling good about it. But we really do have a ways to go to get down to that moderately high and moderate and low area, which is just under the line that you are looking at right now. Looking at our total cases, the age group that has the most cases currently is the age group 20 and under. Of that, zero to five-year-olds, there are two cases. Six to 17-year-olds, there are nine cases, and 18 to 20-year-olds are zero cases. Looking at our seven-day case incidence, that's an average per day. We've had nine cases per day. We really, our goal is to get under one case a day. I think we can do it. We are in the yellow right now. Our seven-day average test positivity rate per day is 9.7 positive tests per day. At one point, we were over 30% positive, so we are coming down. However, if you look at this week's numbers, you and I know that we've talked about 28 tests per day. That is our goal, and we've had fewer than that. So we, we want to look at this very carefully and make sure that we encourage people who are experiencing symptoms to get tested. And there are, you know, testing sites yet available for everyone. A little bit of news here, our hospital capacity, we have 86.8 inpatient beds occupied. That isn't necessarily for COVID-19. Only 2.04% of beds right now are occupied by patients with COVID-19. So we're in the green there. And then to look at our metrics for suppression, so this is similar to what we use for the school district. We are in this high range, and we want to be really, really careful that we keep using the mitigation strategies we all know well so that we don't creep up further. Again, we want to get down into the moderately high, moderate, and low range over time. And with the vaccine, I believe that that will happen. It will take some time, though, to get everybody vaccinated. At this high rate, we have to be careful about our gatherings. So we want to make sure that indoors people have gatherings with their household, but with limited size, 10 people or fewer with physical distancing and face coverings. Outdoor gatherings, limited size, but 25 or fewer with physical distance and gatherings. And then if you look at events, 25% capacity is important. And this strategy does also Um, and this strategy does also um, require the use of masks and physical distancing, hand washing, all of those strategies we know so well. Um, our community still has testing, as I said, for COVID-19. And um, the Reed Golf Course is available till the twenty-fourth of March. They're looking for a, a different site. Obviously, things are going to change at the golf course shortly. Sunny View Expo Center is a Wisconsin Army National Guard site as well. And uh, it's been an enduring site throughout the pandemic. They're looking for an extension. And then we do have the Theta Care Mobile Unit at Christ the Rock every Thursday. Um, and then physicians, Theta Care Physicians and NINA, and the Culver Family Welcome Center. And the Culver Family Welcome Center um, also vaccinates. So for vaccines, again, your healthcare provider or healthcare system, local pharmacists and other community clinics. Our Fox Cities Exhibition Center is ongoing and we collaborate with them. Uh, this past weekend, our staff, um, uh, it would be Deputy Jacobson and myself, along with five of our public health nurses, vaccinated educators at the Appleton Expo Center, the Fox Cities Exhibition Center, and uh, completed one thousand two hundred and thirty-one vaccines on that Saturday. So it was a very successful clinic and just want to thank all of the individuals at um, in this collaboration for all of their help. And in particular, want to thank Kurt Eggbrodt, who is the Incident Commander uh, and is the Health Officer for the City of Appleton. So that's been a great, ongoing collaboration, and I believe that will continue.
Nancy, we had quite a few Manashia School District people there as well. Do you know?
Yes, we did. We, we, we were, we, it was very well attended by Manashia School District. We have been vaccinating those school district members that are in the one A group. But um, obviously, we, we couldn't move forward until we were authorized to do so. And we've planned the clinics to assist um, uh, the school district in getting that done in an efficient manner. Especially on a Saturday, they can take some time to recover should they have some um, oh, you know, soreness and um, any kind of af- after effects of the vaccine. So it doesn't require the district to have to get substitutes in. So it's a very, it was a very efficient um, clinic. And yes, we, we saw um, uh, over, I would guess it was around two hundred and forty, two hundred and fifty um, Manashia Joint School District um, educators. So it's great. And then we are having our second dose clinic with the Army National Guard tomorrow, the sixteenth, and then Wednesday, the seventeenth, and then the morning of the eighteenth, we're going to hold a small first-dose clinic, especially since we have the National Guard here. We're going to put them to work. Uh, again, we're still seeing those one A eligible individuals. So um, individuals in the groups that we've described previously, people over sixty-five, um, we will be seeing them. Um, we've started one B. Uh, that's uh, you know, moving forward on March first with the educators first. We have scheduled up um, the utilities because they are in the one B category as well. And then the week of March twenty-ninth, we'll be starting one C, which is people ages sixteen to sixty-four with underlying health conditions. So again, these are the groups that we have been seeing right along. Um, and then we've been seeing education and childcare. And again, we're moving into utilities, um, our Manashia Utilities Group. And um, then we'll be moving into the sixteen to sixty-four with underlying medical conditions. And just a little um, information for you, right now, um, the percent of Manashia or Wisconsin residents who have received one dose is twenty-one percent. And if you want to drill down a little bit further to uh, Winnebago and Calumet County. Calumet County, and this is all of us vaccinators. So there are many, many vaccinators, hundreds of vaccinators uh, in the state. So the healthcare systems, the pharmacies, the local health departments are working very hard. And in Calumet County, nineteen percent of the population has had at least one dose. And about ten point six percent have completed the second or the series. In Winnebago County, twenty-one point two percent have had the first dose and thirteen percent have completed the series. So I have pressed the state for local data. I um, we have been working with them to get our staff those statistics. So I'm happy, I'm hoping to have those for all of you uh, as we go forward and make plans for um, the future. So we can kind of keep our eye on the vaccination status as well as the uh, COVID activity level in our community. And again, um, everyone knows this, but uh, we really need to hunker down and make it through these last few months because uh, we're, we're on our way um, to getting to the other side of the pandemic right now. I just wanted to quickly show you what it takes to put a vaccine clinic together. This is the Wisconsin Army National Guard Clinic, and this is our uh, we call it our Incident Command just for the clinic. So there are a lot of people that really collaborate and work together. And I, I also want to uh, thank the school district again for their um, support in helping to make sure that we have a space to do the vaccines. And um, I can take any questions.
Alderman Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Nancy, this is probably as close as we get to uh, uh, opening up our, our Emergency Operations Center. And I just wonder what the experience has been uh, with you, with working with the women and men in the military uh, throughout this pandemic.
Uh, thank you. That's, that really um, it's been a very positive experience working with several groups of people that are behind the scenes that we normally don't hear from. So I'd like to, to put a shout out to Eric Rasmussen, who is Winnebago County Emergency Manager. He helps all of the health departments in Winnebago County to um, make applications to the Wisconsin Army National Guard. He has worked to help us get supplies, so he works closely with Todd Drew. Uh, he has attended our clinics and done walkthroughs. So he's given us tips about how things can be improved. Um, I can't say enough about working with Eric. The other person is Bernie um, from Calumet County, Bernie Sorensen, who is Eric's counterpart. An awesome, awesome um, emergency manager for Calumet County. Again, he helped us during the pandemic when we had our uh, testing site out at UW-Fox Cities. So again, these people are uh, they are the support behind the scenes that you don't often see. Um, the, working with the Wisconsin Army National Guard has been a delight. Uh, they have made the process for securing their health very simplified. And uh, no clinic is too big or too small for them to assist with. They scale up and down. They'll be bringing uh, staff with them that will help us to data entry tomorrow. They've secured uh, additional vaccinators for us. It's not something you can request on an ongoing basis, but we can request intermittently. Um, it's, it's really a, a, a first-class operation with the Army National Guard. So those are just a couple people behind the scenes that we work with. Um, another person that you might not hear about, you hear me say every now and then, that we are in the Fox, Fox Valley Health Emergency Response Coalition. We have been in that coalition since Ebola. And um, there is an individual, Jason, that helps us to secure our vaccines and make sure that the uh, state troopers bring it to our doorstep here the day before or the week that we start our clinics. So there's just a lot of operations behind the scene. And then we have been meeting um, on a weekly basis recently, but a daily basis in the beginning with our city. Uh, it's, it's called Incident Command or Emergency Operations. And um, just again, the people that you're very familiar with there, which would be Pam as our PIO and, and Tim Steica as our liaison and Todd Drew as our safety officer. And so, I mean, there's just a whole crew behind this. And then this separate operations is just for our vaccination clinic. And so we, we really try to keep it a tight ship and very organized and methodical. So everybody's got their lane, everybody takes care of their job, and uh, we make it work. So thanks for asking.
Thank you for that, Nancy, and for all your hard work behind this. I do see your, your light on driving down Main Street after hours yet. And uh, uh, like you said, we're, we're getting really close to uh, getting the people vaccinated. And uh, I know I have about thirty people tomorrow that are going to get their second shot, and they're really happy about that. And the first go-around, they were, they, they just said how seamless it was uh, with your operation there. So hats off to you, Nancy, and thank you again.
And thank you. Um, and I guess, you know, you can see it, 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 it's not just one person, it's working together. So um, you know, I hope that's evident. And, and this is what, you know, this is the, the good part of the pandemic where we, we get to do the vaccination piece. And, and we're happy about that and try to make it work with everyone, giving them many different avenues to get that vaccine. The vaccine is starting to become a little bit more available, although they did send us a um, a memo today that said that there's still more demand than there is available vaccine. So um, it, it will free up. And I got to tell you, Saturday, we did the Johnson and Johnson, and that was a single-dose series. Those people are done, one and done. And that is a nice feeling, especially for our educators. So if that starts to become more widely available, it'll go a little faster.
Alderman, hello.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Nancy, uh, since a number of us are under sixty-five, when, when could we be starting to get our shots?
March twenty-ninth is when, well, listen, you got to be age sixteen to sixty-four with underlying health conditions. And there is a list on the Department of Health Services website of the conditions that um, qualify one. And you'll have to sign an attestation that you have one of those conditions um, when, when the time comes. So take a look at the website. I can send you the link. Um, see if you're in one of those groups. Um, it's, it's pretty broad. So I'm thinking, you know, we're going to have a lot of people to vaccinate once March twenty-ninth rolls around.
Thank you very much. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Alderman Langdon.
Thank you, Mayor. So um, Nancy, how do you keep uh, track of the numbers? First, uh, my first question.
Um, so we.
Of vaccinations.
When.
How do you know how many numbers you got out there?
So what we do, do you mean track of the numbers for vaccinations or track of numbers for the um, COVID activity level?
Well, yeah. Um, I, I, I don't know. I, I've heard that you have to sign, at sixty-five and over, you have to sign up for the vaccination, correct?
Right.
So um, how do you keep the total numbers of this, the sixty-five and over? You got, you got three, four different places, and how do you cross names off and, and, and cross this and that?
Well, those are, those are some of the unsung heroes here at the Health Department and actually in the city that have helped us to put the um, registrations together. So one registration is something called Sign Up Genius, where we put it online, put out the um, the available appointments, and then people can register. They can't see anyone else, but they can register themselves. And others, if they're working with other folks and have permission to do so. And then we have had a um, call in line for some people who don't have access to computers or don't feel comfortable using computers to register. And um, what that has done is it has allowed us to pre-populate um, pre-populate our, I don't know why I'm seeing a different view here. So it has allowed us to pre-populate the website with this Sign Up Genius that has only so many um, uh, appointments. So it's very controlled. And when we get to the clinic, often because we have only had Pfizer until this last Saturday when we had Johnson and Johnson. But um, with the Pfizer vaccine, um, you can draw up an additional dose. So during the day, from each, from each vial, so during the day, we keep track of how many doses we may have left over. And then we have a short list of folks that are qualified that we can call at the last minute to get them in. So it's really a balancing act to do that with these um, doses, you know, more than one dose. So that's one way we manage that. Um, to get to the, to get to the ordering is also another trick because you have to look at um, how much you can actually do and then how much um, we would anticipate getting, uh, because obviously not everybody's gotten their full allocations. Um, so yeah, it's, it's a, all of balancing act.
Okay, so just, just uh, if, if the sixty-five and over um, this weekend coming up, all the vacs, like, all the vaccinations that you had signed up for that, do you wait the calendar days until like Randy, Alderman Randy can get vaccinated? So, you know, so in between, nothing's being done? Everything's, it just sits there?
With our new, um, with these, um, what's happened is they've gone through phases. So the first phase started with the police and the fire and um, then the uh, frontline healthcare workers, et cetera. And then they added in sixty-five plus. And uh, we've got a lot of those done, but there's still more. And then there's, they added then the educators. So that's another group. Now, this last week, um, they have added restaurant workers, so they'll be there. So there's, there's plenty of people. It's making sure we have enough vaccine for all the people we need. Um, and then as a vaccinator, we um, have agreed that we will not jump forward. So.
Okay.
As much as we want to vaccinate Randy.
Yeah.
We can do it.
Okay.
Until the twenty-ninth of March.
All right. Thank you, Nancy.
Yep.
I think politicians are the very bottom of the list for vaccination, actually. Alderman Grady.
Uh, thank you. And again, thank you, Nancy, for your staff and all your hard work. If you were to take a little crystal ball, put it in front of you, now that the Johnson and Johnson vaccines out there, and with the hierarchy of who has to get what and the, the order of it, um, timeline as to opening things up in this city of Manashia, Fox Cities or whatever, I don't know, I don't want to put you in a spot, but where do you see the light at the end of the tunnel? At what month or what is your timetable that maybe let's get back to normal?
That's a very, very tough question. You're right. My crystal ball gets a little fuzzy when it, um, well, we uh, we really want to try to get as many people vaccinated as possible in the coming months. Um, it'll largely depend on the availability, and the president has said that we will have vaccine for everybody. It don't, doesn't mean that it'll be administered, but it'll be out there um, in May. Uh, but will take time to get it into people's arms because you only have so many vaccinators compared to the population. Um, I, I would love, he's, he says that, you know, we're going to be able to get together in small groups, family groups for the Fourth of July, to be able to do things like have a barbecue outside. Um, I'm still anticipating there will be circulating viruses because we still have a significant group of people that are younger. of people that are younger, and their vaccines, they're being trialed right now in children. And it's anticipated, Dr. Fauci noted that they may have vaccine in the fall for the older children and then next winter for the younger children. So it's a process, and I don't think we're gonna be able to leap, you know, let the doors wide open anytime soon. I think we'll have to be like you have in your packet, we'll have to be very careful that we don't jump forward only to find ourselves in the midst of variants that we can't control. And at the same time, try very hard to get the vaccines to everybody. So I know, I'm anxious too to get out there and really, I think this summer will be more optimistic than that last summer, but I don't know that we'll be full throttle open for quite some time.
So stay tuned. Looks like that's all questions for this evening. And we'll move on to the Minutes and Communications. Do we have a motion?
Mayor.
Alderman Severn.
Thank you Mayor. At this time, I'll move that we receive Minutes A through D and Communications E through H.
There is a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Alderman Taylor.
Thank you Mayor. Mayor, the last item, the Bontesite Lawson Canal update. And I see that we're gonna have a presentation at City Hall on March 23rd at 5:00 PM. And it's a 30-minute presentation. And we said there's gonna be question and answer session, and a virtual option will also be provided to listen live. Can't we provide a link there that the virtual people can ask questions, just like we're doing tonight? And have a moderator that can handle that? Or this company that's putting together the presentation?
We're looking at having the chat box open that people can type in chat, and then we can kind of condense those questions together and answer those as we go along, yes.
Okay, so there will be an interactive portion of that meeting?
A little bit, yeah. So it gets very difficult when you have a lot of people on screen trying to interact. So we will have both options there. So I did also want to call your attention to the ATC Community Planting Grant. We did receive that forestry grant this year, but we also received a DNR grant as well for EAV management plan that we couldn't announce until today. So we did receive a little over 17,000 to help remove and replant ash trees throughout our community this year. And that was one of the first stewardship grants, not stewardship, urban forestry grants we've gotten for past four or five years now. Alderman Nichols.
Thank you Mayor. Continuing with what Alderman Taylor was mentioning about a virtual option for that update on the Bontesite in Lawson Canal, am I hearing correctly then that there will be a virtual option for members of the public?
Yes.
Thank you. And also, since this is in Communications and it's not widely known yet, if Director Schrader could inform the listeners and future viewers of this meeting what this is about, that would be much appreciated.
I'm guessing Sam is there. We also have some PR materials that'll be going out through Park and Rock in the next couple of days as well.
Yeah, certainly. So again, this is looking at the Lawson Canal. We've been talking about this project for a decade or so and really trying to push for a, to get a kind of a concept plan together, if you will, for looking at public access and how that site kind of comes together to want to keep the public waterways public, so we can continue to, you know, have the public use those, but also capitalize on development and the connectivity. So we are working towards submitting for a May 1st DNR stewardship grant. That is an annual grant, so again, we are pushing for that, so we can kind of continue to move forward with that. So with this, on May 23rd, so next Tuesday, prior to the Parks Board meeting at 5 o'clock, as stated in the communication that can be found in the council packet for general members of the public, we are proposing to have a workshop. So there'll be a presentation, half-hour presentation by the consultants, and then a half-hour Q and A session to follow that. We do anticipate recording this presentation, so it will be available and put out to the public in some format. Those details have not quite been finalized. I believe we have a meeting actually in the morning. So again, continuing to move forward in this Lawson Canal conversation. That public comment period will be open for roughly a week. So again, not only is it just at the meeting, but there will be some form to make sure it is made available to the public, so that we can provide public comment over that week period. And then bring forward this to kind of get the RDA, the Parks Board, as well as the Plan Commission to recommend approval, and then obviously onto the Common Council for final acceptance for applying for that DNR stewardship grant this May.
And that is March 23rd, correct?
Yep, so next Tuesday, March 23rd, 5 o'clock, public presentation.
Thank you. And then I just have one other comment about Item G under Communications, and that is the Unclaimed Bike Auction. In reviewing the list, those look like some great bikes, and I can't wait to see them. But when I did go to the website that's listed on the memo, I couldn't get to the website to see anything, because I needed a username and password. But if I went to govdeals.com, then I could see photographs of bikes and other auction materials, although this group is not posted there yet.
Officer Enchuk, do you have any idea about this or not? Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, that's totally fine. I was having problems with my mic. I'm not aware of the change in the website, however, I can check on that tomorrow. And I was unaware if the actual photographs of the bikes would be up right now for viewing or if that would start on April 1st when the auction starts, but I will double check. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor.
Thank you Mayor. Looking at the minutes received and the commission meetings, I had a conversation with the Leica municipality attorney, and she stated that any commissioner that has a financial connection to that meeting should take a seat in the gallery and remove themselves from the board or the commission by that item is being discussed. Though I had this brought up to me by a member of the public, and I got a verbal ruling from the Leica municipality. So I would hope that's expressed to our commissioners in those meetings. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Seeing done, the motion carries. Who wishes to make a comment this evening?
Hi, Sandra Deville Taylor, 545 Broad Street. I noticed that there are other members in the public tuned in, and if they would like to speak, I will waive my turn.
You're up right now, Mrs. Taylor.
Okay. I am going to jump to the Board of Public Works agenda, due to the fact that there's no option for the public to speak on that. Ironically, I attended the Housing Authority when the Strong Neighborhood Program applications were reviewed. There were two applications, both of them were major renovations additions, and I was opposed to both of them. Both of those applications were approved by the Housing Authority to get their grant. One of those applications happens to be what is on the Board of Public Works agenda tonight. I hate to admit it, but I'm starting to think I'm psychic, because I see things happening before they appear on the agenda. I brought up at the meeting whether or not this project is a 50-foot lot. It is now a legal conforming lot, because the building that is on there is grandfathered in. Any revisions to that would have to remain within that footprint. And I brought up the fact, why are we approving this grant prior to reviewing the site plan and what project it's going to be, and so on and so on? The setbacks don't match, and now it appears as if they want to basically rebuild an entire structure on that lot. Granted, I am all in favor of people renovating and investing in the city. I did it myself. But I also know numerous people who've been denied variances and do the setbacks by inches. And now we want to grant them basically a city easement to this property owner so that they can build on the lot that they should have known prior to purchasing what the restrictions were. This is going to open up a can of worms, especially in that area. We have had other property owners over there file for a hardship clause in order to build garages, and it all went through the Plan Commission. So I'm, and then it went on to appeals. So my big question first off is why is this coming through the Board of Public Works and not the Plan Commission? And there's a lot of questions that needs to be raised on this. So at this point, I would not be in favor in allowing this. Then on to the regular council agenda. Under landmarks, the facade grant program. I discussed this before, and you're going to be reviewing the revised protocol tonight. What appears to be happening is that Landmarks is trying to expand upon this program to allow grants in excess of what I think the council originally foresaw as preserving the historic integrity of the buildings in the C2 Downtown District. The tuck point, the roofie, and the windows, the structural integrity of these buildings. What appears to be happening is we have a whole new definition of facade. Facade that basically means the front-facing portion of a building. This is to expand it to the sides, to any area that could become a gathering spot. That could include the Broad Street parking lot, even though it says in the protocol that it does not include the rear facade. But events have happened in the Broad Street parking lot. It can also include the parking lot adjacent to the Marina Apartments. There is no limit here on to what could be amended. Furthermore, I'm really questioning some of the language regarding the tips, because it appears as if community development will pick and choose which projects are appropriate, which aren't. These are really open-ended ordinance. There's this, I think, what we're doing here is one group is looking to expend more taxpayer dollars to promote private investment in the downtown for privately-owned businesses, that many of which are investments. And we have great businesses down there that have stuck millions of dollars into their building. But just, we have just as many that haven't done anything, and we haven't done anything as far as enforcement in getting those buildings fixed, specifically the Coke building. So I think we have a disconnect here. Then quickly, under the Minutes, Landmarks and RDA you approved, yet they were not approved in committee. Your previous council meeting, you approved the Housing Authority Minutes, and they had not.
You're at five and a half minutes at this point?
That's why I will hold my other comments for the end. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I would like to speak regarding the Public Works meeting to follow. Action Item Number 7 about the encroachment right away on Brighton Drive. So I'm the resident with the home that we're, we'd like to do some renovations on. And I'd like to clear it up. I know the previous speaker kind of made it sound like we're trying to build something that isn't there. We currently have a home on the lot, and we are not asking to expand the footprints a single inch. We just wanna, we would like to, we're gonna go up a story, which is allowed by the city rules. But where our garage currently sits, we need to, the floor is all busted up in there, and it's just unsightly. If I'm gonna invest all this money in this home and in the neighborhood, I want it up to our standards and replace the floor in here as well. But the way that the current rules are written, if I remove any bit of this floor, I can't rebuild on that particular spot. So what I'm actually asking for is a, I guess, a land use permit or to be in this encroachment, to just rebuild exactly where my current footprint sits. If I don't get the permit issued, the current structure that's there is gonna stay there anyway. And it's honestly, it's quite unsightly, and it's really not up to like our own living standard. So we would probably end up leaving the city and looking for housing somewhere else if we weren't able to do the project here that we're trying to do, just update our house and make it a little nicer and add a little living space on top of what's currently there. If there's any questions, because I know there's not a place to speak in the next meeting here by any of the members, I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody had.
So we don't allow questions and answers here, but if the chair during or the Public Works meeting wishes to allow questions at that point, or if there are questions he could ask at that point, so.
Okay.
It won't be too long before we get to that meeting.
Okay, and that's all, that's all I have then. And again, I'm not, I'm not trying to take anything I don't already have. I'm not trying to expand my home's footprint at all. I just wanna be able to use exactly what I already have there without worry that someone's gonna come and ask me to tear it down down the line if I put some money into the place the way it sits.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak tonight? I don't see anyone else. If you did want to speak, you'd need to turn your microphone on, so I can tell that you're waiting. So seeing no one else, we will move on to the consent agenda. There are five items this evening. Does anyone wish to have any of them separated? Alderman Severn.
Mayor, I'm gonna just go through all of them.
Okay.
All right. So at this time, Mayor, I'd like for us to approve the Common Council Minutes of 3:1 of 21.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
There is a motion and a second, is there a discussion? Does anyone have discussion? No discussion? Since there's no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Seeing done, the motion carries. Item 2, Alderman Severn.
I believe that is for Alderman Mark Langdon.
Okay, you had your light on, so.
Yeah, I was looking.
Alderman Langdon.
Yes, I will make the motion that we are awarding contract unit number 2021-05. That's for the public protection facility rooms for the remodeling at the fire stations and at the police stations to IEI general contractors in the amount of $76,000.
I'll second that, Mayor.
There is a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
I have.
Alderman Severn.
I'd like to commend one of my colleagues, Alderman Mark Langdon. This has been a topic of his for some time. He pushed in the budget this improvement, and I think it was strongly needed. And he formed a coalition of all of us to support it, and we have a better facility because of it, so good job, Mark.
Thank you. And thank you to all my peers out there for riding along. Thank you. And thank you to all my peers out there for, uh, riding along with me. Um, it's been great. And then, and, uh, the firemen and the police, uh, they are going to love their new facilities. Thank you. So going on to number two.
Hold on, we need to take a vote.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Nichols?
Hi.
Alderman Taylor?
Hi.
Alderman Sevenick?
Hi.
Alderman Langdon?
Hi.
Alderman Schmidt?
Hi.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Hi.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Hi.
Alderman Repella?
Hi.
Motion carries eight, zero.
Thank you, Court, Court Kramer. Um, number three, I'll make the motion that we are awarding the contract unit number twenty twenty-one dash zero six. That's for Baldwin Street reconstruction. And that's the Summers Construction Company in the amount of two hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars and ninety-five cents.
I'll second that.
It's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I don't see any other discussions. So since there, oh, Mark, did you have discussion?
Nope.
Seeing that there's no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Nichols?
Hi.
Alderman Taylor?
Hi.
Alderman Sevenick?
Hi.
Alderman Langdon?
Hi.
Alderman Schmidt?
Hi.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Hi.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Hi.
Alderman Repella?
Hi.
Motion carries eight, zero.
Thank you, Court, Court Kramer. And the number four, like to make the motion for the approval of the quarterly stormwater flyer.
I'll second that, Mayor.
It's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I don't see any discussion. Since there's no discussion, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Item five is the Plan Commission recommendations. Is there a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion, Mayor. Uh, I'd like to make the motion to approve the special use permit as presented for fifteen fifteen Appleton Road, parcel number six, uh, dash zero one two six two dash zero four with the following condition, that a completed sign, permit application and payment be submitted prior to the installation of the new sign.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
It's a motion and a second. Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Nichols?
Did you have, hold on, Becky had discussion, I think.
Yep, you went right past it. Um, Director Schrader, about the sign itself. Um, am I understanding that the, um, new monument sign will essentially be built over the existing pole sign?
That is correct, yes. So by definition, the monument sign, or the, the sign can be modified to create a monument sign. Uh, there was a member of the public that noted, you know, it should be reduced in size. Sixteen feet is our requirement, um, within our zoning code for the height requirement. So the sign is sixteen feet. So again, that is meeting the definition of monument sign with an, uh, an added base on the bottom.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I think you called on me anyways.
Yeah, I was trying to turn the mic back on, sorry.
Um, I'm voting in favor of this because basically that intersection already has two monument signs. I think it would be unfair to that, the particular station if they were not entitled to one when, uh, Casey's and QuickTrip both are allowed to have theirs, so.
Okay, seeing no other discussion, I think. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Nichols?
Hi.
Alderman Taylor?
Hi.
Alderman Sevenick?
Hi.
Alderman Langdon?
Hi.
Alderman Schmidt?
Hi.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Hi.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Hi.
Alderman Repella?
Hi.
Motion carries eight, zero.
Item J is action items. The first is the accounts payable and payroll. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of February twenty-sixth through March eleventh, twenty twenty-one in the amount of three million sixty-six thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and seventy-eight cents.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote. Oh, Chad, I'm sorry. I gotta make these squares smaller. I mean, bigger apparently.
That's okay. This is just, this is just clarification on my end. I don't know if this is for, um, Jennifer or Adam Alex. It's the page seven, combination page twelve. It's the Morton Salt for twenty-five thousand dollar check. I'm just curious as to, is that the salt for the city? And then second part would be, I thought we were going through someone else besides Morton Salt if this is the salt for the city roads.
This is the salt for the city roads.
And then I'll ask Adam Alex, have we always gone through Morton, Morton Salt? Sounds like the, there are middlemen here instead of a distributor.
Uh, what it is, is we buy our road salt through the state, uh, contract. We, uh, partner up with the state of Wisconsin. And the state of Wisconsin, um, I guess you would say would, puts it out on bid and then they take obviously the lowest bidder. Uh, sometimes it's Morton Salt, sometimes it's Domtar. Uh, it could be a variety of other, uh, suppliers. Um, in this particular case, this year it is Morton Salt.
So is there a way you, instead of putting out for bid for the, from the, for the state? Or could, could we get into some other type of contract versus having a middleman? Or is that not an option?
Uh, actually, it's not a middleman. The state is actually acting as the middleman. So the state goes out and they put out a bid for however, hundreds of thousands of tons of salt. And, uh, they secure the pricing and the quantities from the different suppliers. Um, they stock them on the, the, a variety of docks, Lake Superior, up in Green Bay, down in Milwaukee. And then we as, uh, um, um, partners, I guess, or, uh, users of the, uh, state contract pricing get, uh, are then allotted our, uh, quantity that we, uh, uh, sign up for or lock in for a contract, uh, contract with them for.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Taylor? Oh, no. Seeing no other discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Nichols?
Hi.
Alderman Taylor?
Hi.
Alderman Sevenick?
Hi.
Alderman Langdon?
Hi.
Alderman Schmidt?
Hi.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Hi.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Hi.
Alderman Repella?
Hi.
Motion carries eight, zero.
Item three is a class A and a class A liquor license. Do we have a motion?
Uh, item three you'd like to go to? We missed item two, but I'll make the motion for three.
Oh, I'm sorry. You can do either one.
I'll do three since you called it. Um, move to approve the class A beer and class A liquor license for Heran Brothers LLC doing business as Club Liquor for the premise located at two thirty-four Main Street for the remainder of twenty twenty through twenty twenty-one licensing year.
I'll second that, Mayor.
There's a motion and a second. Um, it says Key Heran, but I saw Jonathan in the background a little while ago. So we do have the representatives here if there are any questions. Um, discussion? Did you have discussions, James?
Yes, I'd just like to welcome, uh, James and Jonathan to Main Street Manasha. And, uh, I am your council representative. So, uh, thank you for investing in the city of Manasha.
Alderman Repella?
No, no, I was ready to vote. Sorry.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Nichols?
Hi.
Alderman Taylor?
Hi.
Alderman Sevenick?
Hi.
Alderman Langdon?
Put your mic on.
Can't hear you, Mark.
Turn your mic on. Give a thumbs up, Mark. All right.
Alderman Schmidt?
Hi.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Hi.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Hi.
Alderman Repella?
Hi.
Motion carries eight, zero.
Okay, we'll move back to item two. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Move to approve the beverage operators license applications for the twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-one licensing period as listed under approved in the clerk's memo dated March eleventh, twenty twenty-one.
Is there a second?
Second. Mark, we can hear you now.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
This is, what the hell?
Mark, you're on now.
You're on.
We can hear you now, Mark.
You can, you can just hear me, right? Uh, hi. I can't get on, I can't get on the web. It's not letting me on. It's knocked me off somehow.
Mayor, if I could, you probably just are on a different window. If you look at the very bottom of your screen, you'll see that little orange circle. If you click that, you may come back on.
Mayor, thank you. Yeah.
Alderman Nichols?
Hi.
Alderman Taylor?
Hi.
Alderman Sevenick?
Hi.
Alderman Langdon?
Now we can't hear him again.
Turn your mic off.
Turn your mic back on.
Hi. Hi.
There we go.
Alderman Schmidt?
Hi.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Hi.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Hi.
Alderman Repella?
Hi.
Motion carries eight, zero.
The next item is the Landmarks facade improvement grant loan policy. Do we have a motion? Alderman Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make the motion for the approval. Now I got stuff, stuffy throat here. Make the motion for the approval of the facade grant loan policy, changing the interest rate for the facade loans from four percent to one percent less than the prime rate, not to exceed four percent.
I'll second the motion.
There is a motion and a second. Discussion?
That's Mayor, I have a discussion. Yes. Thank you. Um, I, uh, I and James, we're the ones that originally started this program. And, um, I, I don't always disagree with, uh, I was gonna call her Alderman Taylor again, uh, Mrs. Taylor. But in this case, it is written where it says ineligible. And one of the things that is ineligible is a facade facing backs of alleys or the rear of buildings. And I've given that a lot of thought. Uh, we've done a number of facades in the fronts already. Uh, a lot of us, when we enter these businesses in the downtown, we do enter from the back or from the alleys. So, um, I think we need to kind of clean up the backs. We're only talking twelve, I mean, uh, two thousand five hundred dollars here to, uh, help out, especially if they at least put in twenty-five hundred to five thousand or more. So, uh, I'm gonna offer an amendment. I think we need to start, uh, uh, cleaning up the back areas. And this isn't just for any building. It is designated in the C, C one or C two district, which is only one, Tom? Is that what you said?
Two.
Two, two. Um, and that, uh, it has to be within the historic districts also. So, um, I'm gonna offer amendment that we do allow for the facades in the back alleys or the back parts of the buildings.
I'll second that.
So there's a motion and a second. Director Schrader, would you recommend that we just remove item number one to do that? Or would you like to add something somewhere else?
You would have to add it, Mayor, to be specific. Otherwise, if you just eliminate that, because we've never had it before. So I'm offering as my amendment that that is now going to be a part of the facade restoration program, the backs of the buildings.
I think that is in the definition of a facade.
Nope, we only allowed it for the fronts, but I'll let Sam speak if Mayor chooses.
Director Schrader?
Yeah, so I guess the, the definition, um, is, uh, Alderman Grady had noted that does state in the second paragraph, for the purpose of this policy, a facade is defined as the face or exterior of a building facing a public street, uh, space open to the public gathering. Um, so we likely could, if we cross off the ineligible project, um, if desired, uh, we could place, uh, within that definition, um, of, uh, exterior of a face or exterior of a building facing public street, uh, space open to the public gathering, uh, back alley or, uh, rear of a building.
Yeah, Mayor, I also have the floor. And the reason I, I'm suggesting that it has to be put in there is because an alley is not necessarily a public street. So in some cases, um, it may be in the district, but not in all of the district. So, uh, just to be more clear, so that we don't have another situation like we had a few weeks ago when we were trying to get a definition of, uh, our policy here, so that it's clearer, so that a future council down the road doesn't say, well, but this isn't a public street, so they can't do the backs. So I just want it very clear, clearly put into, um, this policy.
So I'm gonna read into what the motion is here then. So your motion is to remove item one ineligible projects. Facades facing back alleys or the rear of the building. And then add that to the second paragraph, the definition of the facade at the end where it says public gathering, comma, including whatever it says down here. I gotta scroll again. Including facades facing back alleys or the rear of the building. Correct?
Right.
Okay. Does everyone know what the amendment is then?
And if I may, I, I do not have any issue with, um, the, the public area such as, and then we have basically one, and that's, uh, the area, uh, between the coffee shop and, uh, the wild apple. Uh, to me, those sites would be eligible under this agreement.
Okay, discussion, discussion of the amendment. Did you have discussion, Director Schrader?
I, I just, yeah, we can move forward with the amendment and then I'll, I'll come back to that point.
Okay. On the amendment, Alderman Taylor?
Yes, uh, just, uh, some history here. Before the parking ramp, uh, we had a parking lot, uh, that was, uh, when we started. There was a gas station on the west side and, uh, there was many houses. City of Manasha invested over a million dollars in the Broad Street parking lot before the parking ramp. And then we did something unique. We, uh, we asked the property owners somehow if we could do some land swaps. And then we put a public sidewalk back there. So all the buildings would be serviced by a public sidewalk. Most of them are, not, not all, but most of them are. And we wanted to create, uh, more parking options for those buildings. And by doing that, uh, putting in the sidewalk and the stalls, uh, to park there. So we had access from both sides. And I think, uh, this is a good idea to, uh, help, uh, the enhancements of our downtown and the rear facade of the buildings. Thank you.
Alderman Sevenick?
Oh, no, I just left it on, sorry.
Okay, Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. This amendment then would include the, um, rear of the buildings on the Taco Street corridor as well. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, or the main street corridor where you're looking at behind me as well.
Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion? All those in favor of the amendment?
Hi.
Hi. Hi.
Are there any opposed to the amendment? Okay, the motion stands as amended then. Is there more discussion on the uh, policy at this point? Alderman Taylor?
Mayor, I'd like to offer another amendment. And that would be, um, um, on page two or on the, um, uh, the proposed revisions, uh, page one, uh, paragraph two. And there's a couple where the, the language is, uh, the Director of Community Development and or his designate may consult with the, for the project. I would like to see the designate be uh, more clearly written as, uh, as the, uh, Associate Planner. Again, we're cleaning up language on here and, uh, uh, we have different shifts in the departments, but, uh, I would like the designate to be the Associate Pl- Planner.
I'll second the motion.
Hold on, before you do that, we do not have an Associate Planner right now. Director Schrader?
What is, uh, what is Joe Stevenson's, uh, title?
Let, let's, let's let Director Schrader discuss this, and then you can change your motion if you'd like.
Yeah, so, and, and James, for, for, just for clarification, so not the second paragraph in reference to the Community Development Department, but I believe it's noted uh, under paragraph two, initial consultant, and then again, um, uh, again, under item five, loans and or designate. I think it states it just the two places. Um, so currently it states Community Development Director and or designate, similar to what we've done, uh, elsewhere within our municipal ordinance. Um, as the mayor kind of had noted, uh, the Associate Planner, that position, that title does uh, go back and forth at times, and it has over the last, uh, five years or so, from Associated to Principal Planner, depending on qualifications and things of that nature. Um, so again, what we're looking for is and or designate. Um, it, it is likely going to be that position. Um, and unless it would, for some reason, be the coordinator, if, if we were lacking that position, like say there was a vacancy for a time being, but that is where that and or designate came from.
So, Alderman Taylor?
We could use the word planner, uh, so we don't have to, the Associate or Principal, uh, his designate, Planner. How's that?
My recommendation would be to keep it the same, but, uh, again, that is up to the common council.
It's also, uh, it's also under item, item five also has it too under the loan. So, um, I just like, we're clearing up language here. Uh, we had a hard time figuring out what the facade was. That's why we're here. I just want to make sure that we don't have anybody else, uh, in the mix here besides, uh, the Community Development Director and his Planner.
Director Schrader, would it work and or designate within the planning department? Something like that?
Nope, nope, nope.
No?
No, no, no.
So you wanted to say and or Planner? Because we do not have a position titled Planner either.
What is, you know, what is those in title?
Planner is, Planner is acceptable. We do have two positions that are have Planner in it. It's the Associate and the Principal. It's just we only have the Principal Planner filled.
Okay. So typically, if we have a less experienced person, it would be an Associate Planner and more experienced would be a Principal Planner. If the HR Director is okay with and or Planner, I am okay with that as well.
Mayor, I'd rather it only be Principal Planner, that it be Sam and Joe at this point, and whatever those positions are.
Well, though.
I don't want, uh, can I speak? I'm sorry, I kind of jumped in if Alderman Taylor doesn't mind.
Go ahead. I'll yield to you.
Thank you. It, here's the other reason, um, I'm interested in this is because I don't want this to be farmed out either at some point. All of a sudden, we've got a, a secretary or something doing this, or we have, uh, or we decide to contract it out to somebody. I don't want us doing that. So, um, I'd rather that it just be these two people at this point.
Joe, Joe has held both positions. That was, that's what we're trying to say.
You know, if you want. Is Joe possible Planner?
He is right now.
Okay, then that's all I would like. I mean, it's up to James, but I'd rather only see it be the Community Development Director and his Principal Planner.
That, that's fine with me. Either that or eliminate the Planner, either that or eliminate the Planner, just have the, uh, the Community Development Director. We have twenty buildings downtown. It's not that complex, and I think the Community Development Director should know what's going on in the downtown, so. But if Alderman Severnick wants that language, that's fine.
Okay, so the motion for amending is to change and or designate to and or Principal Planner in those two locations. Correct?
I think there's three locations, Mayor, under the loans.
Okay. In, in any location within the within the the policy. Director, I'm Director. Alderman Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Alderman Taylor's point. Just make it the Director of the Community Developer. One person. Why do you need two? You, you want to make a amendment to that, then I'll, I'll second that.
Mayor?
Uh, Director Schrader, would you like to comment why that was put in there?
So again, this was, this was put in there because, uh, while the Director can be involved in everything, and the Director does have great knowledge of everything that's going on within the department, I, we cannot handle everything, and we do need as managers to, to, uh, dedicate some of this work, uh, to individuals and then to our staff. Otherwise, it would just be a one-person department, and, and I guarantee you, we're gonna get a lot less done. Um, so again, as, uh, Alderman Tomgady can note, uh, Joe Stevenson has kind of taken the lead with the landmarks. Uh, he is the Principal Planner, uh, but he was not the Principal Planner until this year. Uh, previously before that, uh, he was the Associate Planner. So again, it will likely continue to be the role of the Planner, whether it be Associate or Principal, to continue that, uh, that role. Um, similar to what, uh, I guess was stated earlier with, um, uh, you know, making sure that in five, 10 years, we don't have confusion. If, if in five, 10 years, we have Principal Planner and, and then we hire an Associate Planner, and that Associate Planner goes through an application process and is leading the, the Landmarks Commission, and it's brought up that community development staff isn't following the policy. Again, that is what we're here to do, is to clean up this language, to do what we're doing today that is working in designating this, this staff. So again, if, I, I do strongly feel that it's still, if it's not and or designate, then it should be just generic Planner, because again, I don't want to come back and have, uh, this argument with the common council at a later date, again.
Alderman Severnick?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I somewhat agree with what Sam was saying, that we can't necessarily just put this on Sam. Sam should be able to, uh, do his basically as deputy or whatever within his department. I just don't want anyone else in his department being given this position. And, um, or I don't want us to contract this out because we feel we're too busy with some development projects or something. So that's why, um, I agreed with, uh, what Alderman, I believe what Alderman Taylor's trying to do here.
Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Sam, question for you. Um, when was Joe changed to Principal? From Associate to Principal? And if it doesn't matter, why was the, why was the change made?
Uh, again, because when we, when we had hired, uh, Joe, I believe in the spring of 2018, um, again, that is a, a stepped position. Um, so again, as, as Joe, uh, kind of provided more experience and more, um, ability to take on more tasks, so we can delegate more to him, um, that is when that role, uh, increased to the Principal Planner, and I believe that was, I believe that was, uh, earlier, uh, last year of 2020. Um, but I, I don't know the details off the top of my head.
Okay, thank you.
And Joe also finished his master's degree, and that's when the promotion happened after he received his master's degree. Alderman Grady?
I just want to echo the double appointee as far as the contact, I think, with the city planner and the assistant or whatever term he's called. Um, I think that really helps alleviate some of the pressure between things and from working with Joe, he's highly qualified and he runs a great meeting and he's, uh, wealth of knowledge, so I, it, it's perfect. Thank you.
So I have to make sure I know what the motion is now before I ask you guys to vote on it. For, 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 what, what do we have?
I have to change the designate to Principal Planner in all portions of the policy. Did we decide on just Planner, or are we including Principal as well?
It was, it was the Principal, correct?
Correct. It was.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is to change that to Principal Planner? I don't, all those in favor?
Hi.
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 Are, are there any opposed? You don't get a vote, Director Schrader. Okay, so we have two amendments. Is there any discussion? Further discussion? Seeing no further discussion? We have the motion, the, the policy as amended. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Nichols?
Hi.
Alderman Taylor?
Oh, James, your mic is off. Why don't you skip, James, and go to the next?
Hi.
Alderman Langdon?
Hi.
Alderman Schmidt?
Hi.
Alderman Tomgady?
Hi.
Alderman Tedgady?
Hi.
Alderman Rappella?
Hi.
Motion carries eight zero.
Uh, I don't know what Alderman Taylor voted, to tell you the truth.
He's calling me right now if I can take the call.
Okay, why?
Are you there? Did you get knocked off? Okay, all right. Okay. He, he just told me that he got disconnected somehow. He asked, we hold off on the vote.
It don't matter. Don't matter at pass.
Right, yeah.
Okay. Can, can you speak now, James?
There he is.
I'm not sure why your mic doesn't work. There you are.
Okay, I'll second you. I lost my internet connection for some reason. Now it's back.
Okay, we're waiting for your yes or no on the amended motion.
Yes.
Okay.
Motion carries eight zero.
Okay. I gotta scroll up to the top again here. I didn't have a chance to get a paper version, so I gotta do it all electronically this time. Um, item five is the 205 Mathewson Street Listing Agreement. Is there a motion?
Mayor?
Alderman Taylor?
Uh, that was an amendment I voted on. Uh, aren't we gonna pick up the policy?
We, we had a, um, voice vote for the amendment, and then we had a roll call vote for the entire policy.
Oh, you didn't, you didn't tell me that. I was voting on the amendment.
Oh, did you?
They already voted on the amendment.
Did you want to vote differently on the policy?
No, but I, I, I just wanted to make a statement here. Okay, I just wanted to say, uh, in this memo of, um, uh, just one second here. In this memo, they said that in addition, there is a disconnect between the Landmarks Commission and the Common Council and how to administrate the program. The only question was, was facade, the word facade. And this was put in a lot of years ago, and we, we all thought that it was put in by a lot of people that had been around, some ar- an architect, and the word facade, we had thought that everybody would know that meant the outside of a building. And that all of a sudden now we're we get into, you know, these policy changes and the program. And I don't see any disconnect between the Council and the Landmarks Commission, so I kind of take, uh, I kind of take, uh, that as, uh, an inappropriate uh, wording. And I, I think what we need to look at is with this is, uh, everybody thought they need the policy, the ordinance needed a, a big overhaul, which it didn't. Uh, we got the word policy fixed and, uh, we got the word Planner in there. And I guess, uh, what you look at is the policy wasn't followed. There wasn't two bids. The dollars didn't go to the owner of the building. And over and over throughout this process, it wasn't followed. So there is no disconnect between the Council and the Landmarks Commission. And certainly, if the policy's followed, it's, it's very simple that, uh, that, uh, uh, we wouldn't be at, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be at this juncture right now if the, if the policy was followed, so.
Okay, and we modified the policy, so hopefully it is more clear now, and we won't have this issue again. So thanks, everyone, for having that done.
It wasn't, I'm just saying, the policy, if you, I don't know if you want to debate me, but the policy wasn't followed, Mayor. Playing it simple.
We'll leave your opinion there, and we'll move on to the next item.
Well, there wasn't two bids. It wasn't with the owner of the building. You want to debate me on it, that's fine.
I don't want to debate you. I just want to say that was your opinion, and we can move on. We already passed the item.
That, that's fine. Thank you very much.
Certainly. So item five is the 205 Mathewson Street Listing Agreement? Alderman Severnick?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, uh, I would go along with staff's recommendation that, uh, the Common Council approved the listing contract for 205 Mathewson Street as, uh, presented with uh, assist to sell with a listing price of $20,000 as recommended by the Realtor.
I'll second.
The motion is second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, uh, Manashe here, we always have different names that were called at times. And it's unfortunate this Realtor decided to use a, a, a word that some people think it's derogatory, uh, to call that area something. Uh, the original name for that area was called Libertyville. And let me tell you why it was called Libertyville, because there were so many, uh, veterans, people that signed up for World War I and World War II in that area. And that's why they had called it Libertyville. And the other derogatory term that people take offensive, uh, that our Realtor shouldn't be using that if he's out selling that property for us. So I would hope that 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 word is, uh, removed from, from, uh, the documents. Thank you.
Alderman Nichols?
Mayor?
Alderman Cap- Alderman, Attorney Captain?
Can I just clarify? I believe that the amount is 25,000, not 20,000?
I, I apologize, but in my memo, it says 20.
Says 20 in the memo. What is it, Sam, or listing agreement?
If it's 25, I'm more than happy to, to change that. Sam, is it 25?
Uh, no, the, the recommend, the motion is 20,000 as recommended by staff as well as the Realtor.
Okay.
Okay, but, uh.
The listing contract would need to be updated because the listing contract was as discussed by town council at the previous meeting. Um, but this is what we are recommending to move forward. So that modification would be made in the listing contract.
Is that okay, Pam? You guys.
Yes, I just noticed that the agreement said 25, so I just wanted to make sure we were all clear on what the amount is. Thank you.
Yeah.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Director Schrader, these listing contracts usually have a
Thank you, Mayor. Uh Director Schrader, these listing contracts usually have a term attached to them. I don't see one outlined in line three twenty, so would you recommend a year as consistent with our other agreements?
Um, I, yes, I would. So if that is not.
You can offer an amendment, Becky.
I do know I talked to Chris. Yeah, you could add that.
Okay, then I'll offer an amendment to um, let me see what.
You can just to the listing agreement for a term of one year?
Yes, thank you.
I'll second that.
Yeah, there's a motion a second for a term. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 And that's on the amendment.
Yes, it's just on the amendment. Did you have anything else, Alderman Nichols? As you're drinking, sorry. Any other discussion, Alderman Sevenick?
I did, um, just that um there are some restrictions in there and uh I know community development is aware of those and um I think they're very important. Uh, I'll just leave it at that. I'm sure the council members read it and realize what those uh restrictions are. And hopefully it can sell.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenick?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item six and seven, do we need to go with these now or are we going to wait till the end? Director Schrader?
Uh, that will be up to you as a chair.
I would suggest we wait till the end, Mayor, so if we could move past six and seven and go to the next item.
Okay, item eight, do we have a motion? Alderman Sevenick? Alderman Nichols?
Yep. Am I even on? Oh, go ahead, Alderman Nichols.
Thank you. I'm trying to put it in my agenda here. Um, be- before I make a motion, I'd like to um just make sure a few things are clear with Director Schrader. Clear for everyone. Um. Director Schrader.
You don't mind for a second? Alderman Nichols, I'm going to sneak out for just a second if the discussion continues before I get back. Um, someone take over and keep going, please, okay?
I'll be taking over.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh Director Schrader, you've been in communication with the owner of this property and he's agreed to the terms that are outlined in this memo?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and since it's part of the motion, um that all about, that I'll bring forward, he also understands the circumstances surrounding the blight determination?
Yes.
Okay, and I wanted to bring those forward because as a member of the RDA, I can assure you that the RDA has had a very robust and extensive discussion about this process and before I um state the motion, I wanted you all to know that. Uh, so I moved to approve that the uh Common Council of, moved to approve the acquisition of real estate by the Redevelopment Authority of the City of Manashe for the property of twenty eleven Manitowoc Road and direct staff to commence a determination of blight following Wisconsin state statutes.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
I'm sorry, was it Ann first? Yeah, Ann seconded. Okay. Any further discussion, Alderman Nichols?
Yes, Director Schrader, could you just review and summarize um what the request is here?
Uh certainly, so uh just kind of to go through the the overall purchase. Uh so basically, this is uh twenty eleven Manitowoc Road or the former uh Markway Metals Building, if you will. Uh, the city slash redevelopment authority um has owned the vacant property surrounding this piece of uh property for, for quite some time and has marketed for sale. Um, we have been kind of uh in communications with the the property owner um for some time and uh recently, they did start to uh move their operations. Um, so it did give staff uh in the redevelopment authority an opportunity to kind of come in there um and and have the friendly conversation about uh acquiring the property to, to allow for urban renewal of this entire uh corridor um in a, in a conforming and uh in professional manner. So again, that map is attached. Uh, the, the purchase price of the property that was agreed upon was seventy-five thousand. The sale is continued upon the common council approving the acquisition of the RDA. Um, this follows the RDA rules as well as the state statutes. Um, in addition, uh the redevelopment authority without a uh redevelopment plan within the process, uh the property does have to be determined to be blighted. So upon approval tonight um by the common council in the uh execution of this agreement, we will move forward with the uh with the lighting process, so that is a public hearing process and we'll go through the redevelopment authority as well as past resolutions on both the redevelopment authority and as well as the common council. So um we are looking to hopefully close no later than June first. Um, but obviously, the, the owner is slowly moving out of the property and we do not have a um a development locked in, so but gaining control, I guess, of the property through this agreement um and being able to move forward um and and marking the overall site as as more conforming site is what we are looking at. So again, that is kind of the logistics of the request and the, the offer to purchase um by the redevelopment.
Does the uh doubt amount need to be in the motion? I'd, I guess I'd have to ask uh Pamela Captain. Pam, are you available?
Yes, I know the price does not need to be in there. The only thing is uh without the need for a project plan. So what the Common Council is doing is just authorizing the acquisition without the need for a project plan.
Okay, thank you. Becky, I mean Alderman Nichols, do you still have more?
Yeah, I just want, one more question for Director Schrader and um keeping in mind what we experienced um, probably almost a little over a year ago with lighting and that whole process. Uh, this time it would be specific to this property. Is that correct?
Yes, so it would just be this specific property.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Don.
I believe there's a motion on the floor, correct?
Yes.
And I don't see any further discussion, so if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenick?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item nine is the COVID nineteen pandemic resiliency city of Manashe Plan for common council meetings. Do we have a motion? Do you have a motion, Alderman Repella? No? Did you want me to go through what this does? Yes?
Sure, why don't you reiterate the motion?
So basically what, as we're noticing that circulating virus is dropping significantly and that um meetings have been going back to in-person throughout different communities and different businesses have been coming back to in-person mode. We wanted to start bringing forward um plans to slowly incrementally bring meetings back in person for the common council as well as other uh meetings at the discretion of the chairs. So what this plan does is it's a, a four-step plan that basically starts out at phase one with having open meetings with a virtual option and all of the typical safety precautions that would be done within an in-person setting. Um, these would be potentially a mixed type meeting where some people would be in person, some people would be virtual. Uh, we are working on how exactly those will be recorded. It may be a little iffy to record them. Um, twenty-five percent of the room. Phase two is as the burden continues to diminish and more and more people are vaccinated. We would basically follow the same protocols, but we would drop the um virtual option for the meetings at that point. This would be something that the common council would work together to decide on when we would hit phase two. And then phase three um is seventy-five percent of the occupancy of the room and as well um recommendations changing for uh safety protocols, including face coverings as recommended by the CDC or the DHS. And then the following, the final one is just that we're not going to have any restrictions anymore. So this is a starting point for discussion to start bringing us back into a in-person type atmosphere. Our city staff has been working in person pretty much for the, almost the entire time. Um, we have been able to operate like that and we believe that we could operate that way as a common council too. Especially if we have a option for virtual to start out with. Do you have questions, Alderman Sevenick?
I just wanted to add, so basically, we would not be getting together until possibly May. Uh, maybe uh the, the sign-die meeting, but that would still give every Alderman the option of either going virtual or in-person, correct?
Phase one would be virtual or in-person, depending on which Alderman or which staff would feel comfortable coming. And it could be any date that the common council would choose. It seemed like a good point to pick sign-die, just because it's the start of the new common council at that point. But it would not have to be technically that meeting. It could be any meeting. We do meet the criteria for phase one at this point. I did review this with both um Todd and Nancy, just to go through the safety precautions. This is modeled very much after the senior center's safety precautions to reopen.
And, and I agree with this. At some point, we have to start realizing that we have to start getting back to normal, but uh I would hope that we wouldn't do that until um that what I, I don't know what the date that is, uh April twentieth or whatever date before we would have the combination type meeting. So I, you're looking for a recommendation. Uh, I think these are good phases that we got to work on something and um I still think that if, at some point, if one of us or most of us don't want to do this, then we just, you either contact me or the mayor and we'll, we'll decide how these meetings should run. But I, I think it's, it's good policy to put something in place now so that we all have uh something in front of us and a better understanding.
Yeah, and then we, we should all be eligible for vaccination in May as well, so.
I hope so. So uh apparently the recommended motion is uh to implement the plan as of a specific date and it's that the, what you're looking for is a specific date?
Pick which council meeting you'd want to start this with, I guess, would be the specific date.
When is the first one in May?
Um.
Anyone got a calendar?
I do.
May third.
May.
May third, but how about May third?
How about June first?
Well, but see, if you, if you don't want to, you could still come in virtual. June first would be fine, but we're still going to have, where if half want to meet, they can meet at City Hall and if the other half want to be at home, they can do that. So I think May, the May third date would be a, a good starting point.
Do we have a second?
Someone wants a second or not?
I'll second, I'll second that.
There's a motion a second, Alderman Grady?
And I feel comfortable, I, I was gonna make a comment, maybe.
Sorry. Go ahead.
I, I feel comfortable. I've been va- vaccinated. I've gone through the whole um two-week program afterwards. I still wear a mask. Um, just being vaccinated has given me a little more freedom, I feel, maybe psychologically. I still think that we could probably go to meetings with masks, even if you aren't in uh, I think it's coming to an end here, so I'm getting tired of this virtual stuff. It's cracking out, everyone's cutting out. You can't hear anybody half the time, all this stuff. It kind of disrupts the whole flow of the meeting and I think it's time we really start targeting and thinking about being back together. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you. Uh, I'd just like to say that with the email problems we had last week and this week, I tried to send uh well, I wanted something put in the packet, but the attorney went to law it because it was a article from the Post Crescent. And uh, the article was uh, uh you, you should have to die to attend a public uh, to attend a public meeting. And uh, I sent it to you all today. I think you should all read it. You have to listen to the science. Yeah, we're all frustrated. Uh, we all have issues with this or that. But the key is, we have to follow the science. We just heard our director say her crystal ball is very fuzzy yet. We got ten percent of the population uh, or twenty percent of, with a vaccine. We haven't even got out of the sixty-five-year-old uh category yet. And then we're going into the category with uh sixteen to sixty-four with underlying conditions. So uh, Nancy has done a great job. We're getting, I don't know, where are we, midfield, forty-yard line? Uh, you know, but uh certainly we can't pull up short after all the work that's been put into this and uh myself uh, being the, the oldest on the council, I have issues with uh with that at this time, as I had all along. And you guys aren't in the category. Uh, it's all, it's all personal category. It's all age-related. It's all health-related and we just can't uh put one stamp on everybody to uh conform to what we think we should conform to. And that's how, as long as our health department director uh says it's okay to do this or that, and we follow the CDC guidelines, we, we follow whatever guidelines Nancy McKinney or the health director thinks we should follow. I have no problem with that, but when we start letting politicians uh trump uh sci- uh, uh, trump over the science, then we got an issue, then we got a problem. And I don't think we need a, a, a policy to tell us that. I think we have a director to tell us that. And uh, Mayor, were you saying that we have to meet on the April twentieth, the third Tuesday of the April in person?
No. So the, no, the article that you're looking at was discussing in Madison, Republicans are refusing to follow the state mask mandate and are coming to in-person meetings not following those CDC guidelines. Right now, if we were to meet in person, we would meet the CDC guidelines at twenty-five percent of the capacity in the CDC or DHS, one of the two. Uh, we'd be requiring masks. Masks are required in all city buildings at this point. We don't have any plans to change that in the near future. I would say at least until the end of May, if not longer. And we're not mandating anyone to come in in person at this point. Um, Sam's motion is for May third. May third, you would have the option of either coming in in person or remaining in virtual as you are right now, so you could continue to meet virtually until at some point later this summer, we decide to not allow virtual anymore.
Because al- also, everything seems rather stable at this time, but uh if you look uh internationally and nationally, there's other variants out there now and they don't know how those are going to respond to our vaccines and uh in certain areas, you expect these variants are starting to run rampant, so you know, uh as Nancy cautions us and does such a great job in, in helping us, uh I still think we're at about midfield and uh we should call. we should call the timeout and figure out, figure out where, what we need to do and be cautious moving forward. Thank you.
Alderman Gray?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I totally agree with the Stan's comments. That's why he gave an option. You can either show up or you don't have to show up, but I, I understand everybody's points, but there's options, so it's not like you have to, so I, I appreciate the going forward with this.
Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a question for Director Nancy, and I'm glad you came back on. So I, I know you, I asked, we talked, I asked you the question about doing it and so how can you allow City Hall to be open? If we can't come in for a meeting for a couple hours, but City Hall can be, be open every day? And they're close to everybody, you know? Not all the time, they're six feet apart. So how can you allow that, Director Nancy?
So we have implemented a lot of safety protocols within City Hall as well, and Director McKinney could speak about that. Of course, the safest thing is for no one to ever leave their house. But I don't know that that's practical at this point either. Director McKinney?
So, you know, I, I see that, that, that is a concern, Mark. I, I understand your concern. We have made sure that people wear masks, especially when they are meeting, and that they're distanced. And actually, even here, we have go-to meetings when we get together, for example. So there's very little what I would consider face-to-face interaction, at least with my staff. We follow the protocols that were established by us and by, in cooperation with Human Resources. We have tracked our absences, which have been very low. We use our safety coordinator, which is Todd Drew, and also work with Ham and Human Resources to identify people who might be symptomatic. We make sure they, they don't come to work sick. If they should develop symptoms, they go home. We're very, very cautious. When the people come to interact with us and from the public, they have distance markers on the floors, there's plexiglass in the front. There's also people wearing masks and distancing as they interact. So masks are required, distancing is required, and there's little interaction in comparison to what has happened in the past. But one thing you have to keep in mind is that somebody with their porno there. So one thing you have to keep in mind is that the city workers here are considered essential workers. We need to have them to keep operations going, so that's why we made these recommendations and are following them very carefully.
Okay, do you, are there temperatures taken every morning when they come in?
We did, but there's, there's really kind of two schools of thoughts. We could do temperatures, but we elected to do screening. So what we actually did do is ask people to go through a series of questions before they come to work because taking temperature checks, number one is labor-intensive for our staff. And number two, people can be, not have fever and still have the disease. So it isn't a hundred percent. It is something that can be implemented, but we, after a period of time, when people got accustomed to what kind of symptoms they had to monitor themselves for, we were able to work with them to get that taken care of. And I also asked Pam Captain to jump in if she is hearing anything that I need to add to or we need to discuss further, because this was very cautious and, and very very thoughtful.
Absolutely. Nancy, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Is there any other discussion? If not, we, oh, Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate this discussion and the fact that we are, that a plan has been proposed. I do have a few questions about the plan. First and foremost, Director McKinney, under virus spread in the community, there's two criteria. There's the burden category, and then there's the percent of population vaccinated. And so my question is, is this, do these two benchmarks need to be met to be in a certain phase or one of them?
It's not an or. In my mind, it's an and. If you're looking completely at the burden, you probably will see that burden go down as everyone becomes vaccinated. So maybe the mayor can speak a little bit more to the population vaccinated, but we are now getting that metric available to us. However, it's not a benchmark that I've seen the state offer up. Rather, they use the mitigation strategies by critical or very high, high, which you see before you right now. So if it was critical or very high, you'd be virtual. And then you would go to the moderate, high, or medium mitigation, which would be your phase three, and then a low mitigation, which is, this is all consistent with the state. And then phase four would be when the pandemic is over and restrictions are lifted. So I would ask the mayor to speak to the vaccination of the population, but we should see an inverse relationship. So as the vaccinations go up, the rates of disease should go down.
Yeah, and that's basically what we're looking at here is showing that as people get vaccinated, that there'd be less virus spreading within the community and more opportunities to move forward with a more normal lifestyle. We may have to revisit that at some point because we may not see seventy-five percent of the population vaccinated. I'm not sure. Those numbers were kind of picked out of the air at this point. The more important numbers were the burden numbers at this point, and just showing a progression of people vaccinated.
Okay, but my, my point is I want to, I want to be clear that it's not a, a case of the burden is high, but vaccinations are greater than fifty percent, so we'll move ahead with in-person meetings. These have to work together.
Yes.
We do meet phase one at this point already.
Yes, my next question has to do with the county-city population vaccinated. So fifty percent of the county, it's very different from fifty percent of the city. So Director McKinney, can you provide some clarification there?
Yes, I can. So right now, we currently have vaccination rates for our counties that our residents reside in. So earlier, I shared the Winnebago County vaccination rates and out, and the Calumet County vaccination rates. We have those. I have put in a request with the state to get local jurisdiction metrics for vaccinations. I think it would be useful in so many ways. Just for, you know, working with people in areas where we don't see vaccination, but also for things like this. So I'm anticipating, and, and we have actually progressed to the point where the state has is giving us access to Wisconsin Immunization Registry, so we can query it. But it may take time. So that's why you're seeing, and it is two different, you are absolutely right. There are two different numbers here, just like you see the two different numbers for COVID-19 activity on the city level and on a county level. So our hope is that we begin to get city-level data. So that's why the two are there. So again, it's a matter of revisiting that.
Okay, so we can be confident, though, that we're, we have less than fifty percent of our city population vaccinated today?
That's correct.
Okay.
And probably for a little while yet, unless we get a lot of one-dose vaccines.
Yeah. And as far as twenty-five percent occupancy, what is that number right now for that room? Does anyone know?
You know, I am very sorry. I meant to look that up and I didn't have time today. That triplex, you know, one thirty-two around, we can get that number for you. I wasn't able to get that for tonight.
Okay. Mayor Marcus, do you know?
Yeah, and I had meant to do the same thing and I was not able to get it today either. It is likely, it's likely that we very rarely have more than fifty percent of the occupancy of that room, or even seventy-five percent of the occupancy of that room. We would likely be well under twenty-five percent with people we would normally get for a meeting.
And I think it would be helpful for all of us to know that number, because if I look at tonight's meeting, at one point, there were twenty-nine people on this meeting. We're down to twenty-five now. So to understand what that means would be helpful moving forward.
You're right.
Certainly, we can get that for you.
Okay.
That's why I want to make sure there was time between tonight's meeting and when we wanted to start this.
Okay. And then as far as a virtual option being available, we've talked about the virtual option being available for us. Does that include for members of the public?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that. And my last question has to do with time. Dr. McKinney, or Dr. McKinney, listen to me. Director McKinney.
I'll second that.
The amount of time we spend around people has been a significant factor in determining our risk for contracting the virus. And so can you review what that is right now according to the CDC?
Yes, currently, it's within six feet for fifteen minutes, puts you at risk, even if you have masks on, even if you each have masks on. Fifteen minutes within six feet will put you at risk for COVID-19. So if someone were to be positive for COVID, let's say they're confirmed, that's part of our contact tracing question. Have you been in contact with this person for fifteen minutes or more? And that would be a duration of twenty-four hours, so it'd be five minutes here, five minutes there within six feet, whether or not you have masks. So that's why it's really important to de-densify the areas that you're working in as lo, as much as you possibly can when we're backing into it.
Okay, so that, that would be a concern of mine going forward for all of us and for members of the public. I understand that we would be about six feet apart, but the fact that we would be together in a room for hours at a time when the recommendation is fifteen minutes or less can be concerning. And we set these capacity limits by percentage, but yet, there's the recommendation, I think you mentioned it earlier this evening, about gathering with ten or fewer people?
So there's, yeah, there's indoor gatherings that they mentioned, and then they talk about events, and events would be, you know, groups where you have bigger rooms, where there is the opportunity to spread out. So that, that's the difference with that.
Mayor, as is presented today, is there potential to move between and among these phases depending on virus activity?
It would, is probably not anticipated, but if there was a huge swing, I think we would definitely look at it. But we probably would try to move from one to two to three, most likely, unless there's something very significant that happens.
And, and I think that's what we all want to see. But if we're all understanding together that it, the opposite could happen too, and that we understand that we could go back to phase one, even if we spent in phase two for a while.
Potentially, yes.
Based on activity.
But we also have to remember that one family getting contracted COVID could push us up a category or two. And we'd have to look at, I think, where those cases are coming from, if they're scattered cases or all within one household that is changing that number.
Okay. That's fair.
I, I guess the other thing is, we've been in City Hall the entire time. I do not believe we've had any positive cases from close contacts, Director McKinney. We have had some close contacts that did not turn into positive cases that we did quarantine, but I don't believe any of them turned into close contacts, correct?
Actually, that would be a question for Attorney Captain. I, I am not privy to actual cases.
Yeah, that would be correct. The only close contacts had to do with off-work gatherings of a group of people.
We did have a close contact within City Hall that we did send people home, one or two people home to quarantine, but they did not contract COVID.
Correct.
And then the other thing, Director McKinney, is the school district has been operating more or less in this manner the entire time, correct? A mixed in-person slash virtual meeting?
Actually, actually, they started out hy, I believe hybrid, went virtual based on the trajectory when we started going above three hundred and fifty per one hundred thousand people. And they were in, they were virtual through the beginning of January, and then just using our Harvard model, they de-densified their classrooms, made sure that they had good violations, sixteen.
Hold on, I'm asking a different question. I, I'm asking for the school board meetings, not the classrooms.
Oh, the school board. Well, and that, that wasn't a part of the decision for those things, but they do. I, I'm not sure how it was before. I kind of started going to their meetings, but they have done hybrid. So some people are in the room and some people are virtual. So it's, it's de-densified, six feet apart. I, you didn't mean the school, you meant the school board meetings.
Yeah, I meant the school boards. Did you have further discussion, Alderman Nichols?
I, I just have one, one more thing, and that is, since we're talking about a May third possible starting date to get back to a, a more in-person format, and we don't have a good idea yet of what twenty-five percent of occupancy of the room means. I would very much support just postponing the final decision until our next meeting, till we have that information, so we don't have to go back and rework things after we approve it.
If you would like to make that motion, you could.
I will move that we postpone for two weeks to make sure that we have all the necessary information.
There's a motion, a second to postpone until April 5. I don't know, do we need a roll call on that? Probably. Haley, would you want to do a roll call, please?
Alderman Nichols?
This is to postpone.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Savannick?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tomgady?
Aye.
Alderman Tedgady?
Nay.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Motion carries 7-1.
Okay. So we'll be back on the agenda. The things that we're looking for are the occupancy of the room yet, correct? And then we'll know if we have city data potentially for vaccination levels as well at that point.
Mayor?
Yes.
Once we receive that information, I mean, it doesn't necessarily mean that that motion will be changed. I mean, we could still have that same motion two weeks from now, so.
It's postponed, so yeah, you.
I'm okay with someone wanting additional information and some time. I think we have some time to make this decision, and that's why I was okay with going along with the postponement.
Sure. And that's what I want to do as well, is make sure there was time, if there was additional information that people were looking for, that they could do that. I just lost my agenda here. Sorry. McCuckoo says it is 8:30. I don't know if you guys can hear that in the background or not. Why did I do that? The cuckoo clock.
I got 8:34, you better set that up, right?
Not quite on time. Item, where are we? Item K is ordinances and resolutions. Do we have a motion to Resolution 6?
Mayor?
Alderman Savannick?
Hey, Mayor, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we pass Resolution R 621, a resolution in appreciation for the outstanding public service by Cy Siderski.
There's a motion, a second. Discussion. Stan, James?
Yeah. I'll go first. This is in honor of Cy. Give her a jolt. His favorite quote, "Give her a jolt."
James?
Yeah, I talked to Cy's son, John, and was able to get a picture of Cy for all of you that might not have known what he looked like. And his son, John, had given me a funny story from years ago when Cy was superintendent. And it was a summer evening where we had a severe storm, and his, his crew was called in to remove debris from the streets, and it went well into the overnight hours. And John said after midnight, he had a knock at his door, and it was his dad, and he wanted some beer. And John said, "Well, why do you need beer?" He said, "I don't have enough for the crew," he says. Everything's closed, and his wife, Rosalie, was making sandwiches for the crew. And Cy thought they needed a little beverage to go along with that after the work was done. So Rosalie made the sandwiches, and Cy and John contributed to the beer. And we met with the crews after the work was done, and they had sandwiches and beer. So that's the type of guy Cy was. He worried about his crew, and he personally thought a lot of them. And there it is, his wife and himself coming to the aid of our city workers. So, and again, Cy Swiderski, they broke the mold when, when that guy was done. Just an outstanding citizen, an outstanding person in our community. And Menasha was blessed to have a man like that working for us. And a lot of his attributes trickled down through the years to their other superintendents and the, and the people that work at that garage. And I think that Cy Swiderski can-do spirit is still, still well serves our community here in Menasha. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Seeing no other discussion, if we have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Savannick?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tomgady?
Aye.
Alderman Tedgady?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Motion carries 8-0.
Item two is ordinance one. I can't believe we're only on ordinance one in March. That's, guys haven't been working very hard. Alderman Savannick?
Well, this is my ordinance. But it was put together mainly by the city attorney and the police chief and Adam from Public Works. But at this time, I would, would like to move for ordinance O-1-21, an ordinance amending Title 10, Article B, Section 10-1-4 of the Code of Ordinances. This deals with heavy traffic routes.
Is there a second? There's a motion, a second? Any discussion? Alderman Repella?
Thank you, Mayor. I will support Alderman Savannick's views on this. I was in, driving down Manitowoc Road, going east, and a semi turned on north on Melissa. So I headed in hot pursuit. He was down Melissa. Then he went west on Ninth Street, proceeding from 35 to 40 miles an hour, clipping along, all the way to Bubba's, took a right-hand turn, went through the roundabout. So they use that a number of times. Also, I was over by the corner of Ninth and DePere, and I saw a semi go north on DePere Street. He made the little jig-jag by Gigan School, took a right on Airport Road, took a left by Youth Sports, went down to Orbis. So I witnessed two semis utilizing Ninth Street to, to much to our, much to our chagrin. So I support Alderman Savannick's views. Thank you.
Seeing no other discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Savannick?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Tomgady?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tedgady?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Motion carries 8-0.
Item L is held over business. Alderman Savannick? Hope you guys turn your mic on, Stan.
I clicked over to the agenda, so I didn't realize I had my mic off. This was just the postponed item because we wanted the ordinance that just passed. We wanted to be able to have the appropriate ordinance to enforce the signs to be put up. This, as it's on the agenda, says the place to no trucking type signs on Ninth Street. I'm not sure what those would look like or whatever, but I believe that this needs to be placed up now on Ninth Street in those locations designated by the Director of Public Works.
Is there a second?
Second. I'll, I'll second that. Third sign.
If the Public Works Director feels there should be more, I'm sure he'll put up more. But any other discussion?
Just add Melissa and 114. Thank.
Alderman Nichols?
I was gonna say, I was gonna say that Melissa Street at 114, because that's where, that's where they take the shortcut. So, but Adam's well aware of the traffic, so I'm sure him and Cory will get the right signs up. Thank you.
Alderman Savannick?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I'd like to offer an amendment. I thought Alderman Repella was going to after his story. But I'm quite aware of what he just explained about those, and what Alderman Taylor just said, too. Coming down Highway 114, I mean, if you have your phone on and it tells you the quickest route to Highway 41, it's going to tell you to go down Melissa, and I think Alderman Langdon brought this to my attention also. They're, they're going to go down Melissa up Ninth Street and then get onto 441 or 441. So I also agree. I think there should be a third sign, and the other sign, and I'm offering this as an amendment, should also be placed up on Melissa Street at 114.
I'll second that.
So motion, a second to amend?
Thank you, Stan.
Do we need to talk about the amendment? No? Alderman Nichols?
I was appreciative of the memo from Chief Steika that was in our packet last time around, where he was able to say that we were able to collect some data. And the data was for Ninth Street in particular, that there were 4,400 daily vehicle, was the daily vehicle count on Ninth Street, and about 12 per day were 50 feet long, which comes to 0.27%. Now, I'm not saying that there, that there shouldn't be trucks there, okay? But I'm also not supportive of putting a sign on every single street. And Director Deputy Chief Handcheck, this question is for you. Now that we've updated the ordinance related to heavy traffic routes, is there an opportunity for the Police Department to to, to enforce not having trucks on those residential streets without the signs being present?
Yes, I mean, having the signs present not only helps the citizens, but the trucks that are traveling on those streets, I agree, we don't need signs on every street. So we will continue to make this a priority within our traffic complaint program when we are not on different calls for service or handling other priorities, for sure.
Thank you.
Alderman Gaddy?
Thank you, Mayor. My question, since Angie's here, is, is this just for 18-wheelers? Is there a, also, is there a weight limit, per se, that, for the road? And how are you going to monitor this? Do we, let's say you got a semi going over the road and he's empty, and you say, oh, he's, he's not overweight. You, you got to take him to a scale, or how, how do you enforce this?
The memo that Chief Steika had prepared with the update to the ordinance list, that the language would be switched to 12,000 pounds per axle, and also enclose the memo with the different class of vehicles. So the updated ordinance would reflect Class 7, 8, and 9 would be the vehicles that would be in violation now of this ordinance. So yes, to answer your question, for the most part, it would be the 18-wheelers, but also 24 pound, 24,000 pounds and higher. We would not be taking them to the scales. We would pretty much educate the officers a little further on axles, gross vehicle weight, and so on and so forth. And I'm sure Adam Alex has further details, too.
Yeah, if I may, thanks, Angie. Is the language in the ordinance is pretty much outlining anyone that, it would be a a Class B or a Class A CDL vehicle, meaning that as the officers stop these vehicles, if you have a commercial driver's license and it's a commercial vehicle, that provides, I guess, probably without having to weigh anything up, the ability to know which truck, which truck should or shouldn't be on these streets. So that's the intent of the language.
Alderman Savannick?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to kind of address Alderman Nichols' concern about putting signs up at every location. As Alderman Repella talked about, they came down Ninth Street, and then they used the other side streets. If we keep them from coming down Ninth Street, you got about 70% of the city now where they're not allowed to go down the adjoining streets because they're not using Ninth Street. Ninth Street is a double-wide concrete street that would almost appear to be a truck routing street, but it's not. So this way, they're not going down Warsaw, they're not going down Appleton Street, they're not going down State Street, DePere Street, Manitowoc Street, you know, you can go down the line, because now they're not accessing Ninth Street. So this way, if we keep them off Ninth Street, they won't use these other local streets, including Melissa.
Seeing no, Randy?
Aye. Thank you, the mayor. Again, the starting point is Melissa and 114. So why stop them when they're in midstream, Alderman Nichols, by having a sign maybe on Ninth and, Ninth and Manitowoc? That's not the intent. They are coming down from 114, going north on Melissa, west on Ninth. Alderman Savannick, do they, are they ever going past your house from Bubba's, going down Ninth? Do you see them going that way, too?
More, more than the way you just described, yes.
Okay, so we should have signs on both ends, then maybe one right by Appleton, by the Clark Station. Thank you.
Alderman Nichols?
Could I hear the motion again, so I know what amendment I'm voting on?
The motion is to amend to place a third sign at Melissa and 114.
Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote on the amendment?
Alderman Nichols?
Nay.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Savannick?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tomgady?
Aye.
Alderman Tedgady?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Motion carries 7-1.
Okay, now we are on the motion as amended for three signs. Do you have further discussion, Mark? No? Okay. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. I've always been a proponent of evidence-based decision-making and wish that we and always advocate for us to do more of it. And again, out of 4,400 daily vehicles, about 12 per day were 50 feet long for a total of 0.27%. I think that we have identified that there is a problem, whether it's to the scale that signs be erected in various places is of question. To me, I'd like to offer an amendment to this. to this motion, and that is to add a, um, a sunset clause of December 31st, 2021, at which point the signs would be removed.
Is there a second? The motion dies for lack of a second. Stan, did you have further discussion?
I have discussions. The, the reason we need the signs is because we just passed the ordinance, um, to enforce this, and one way of doing that is, uh, is having the appropriate signage where it wasn't there. Forever, the trucks, semis were not allowed on Ninth Street. I delayed it so that we could address all streets and have a more up-to-dated version of the semi with DOT's new versions of the trucking industry. So, the chief did a great job of pointing that out, and we put it together so that, um, we could have it so it addresses the entire city, and now basically we're trying to eliminate the problem, and um, I'd even go as far as saying, and it's up to Adam to do this, but uh, once he puts those s- signs up, I would ask him also to put a flag on it because it's a new sign, and that the trucker should be informed. We're, we're not trying to go out there and, uh, um, arrest everybody or whatever ticket. We want them to know that they're not allowed to cut through residential areas. This is about 99% residential.
Alderman Nichols?
Um, I'll pass.
Seeing no other discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Nichols?
Nay.
Alderman Taylor?
Hi.
Alderman Savannick?
Hi.
Alderman Langdon?
Hi.
Alderman Schmidt?
Hi.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Hi.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Hi.
Alderman Rappella?
Hi.
Motion carries seven, one.
Item M is a reappointment of Charles Gifford to the redevelopment, Appleton Redevelopment Authority Exhibition Center Advisory Committee. It's a multiple. Is there a motion? Alderman Savannick?
Mayor, I'll move for your appointment of Charles Gifford to the Appleton Redevelopment Authority Exhibition Center Advisory Committee for the period of 1/1, 2021, to 12/31, 2022. That was a multiple.
A second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Are there any opposed? Seeing none. Uh, Director Schrader, how do we wanna go about this? Now, do we want to wait until after Board of Public Works, or what are we doing?
Uh, it is up to you. I, I know we didn't put a recess on the agenda, so I, I guess I'd have to defer to yourself and Pam if we can, if we can recess or, um, we can move forward.
Mayor, I think what we need to do is move forward, uh, go into closed session and, uh, discuss the matter, and if a motion needs to be made, we come back into regular session.
Okay, so, Mr. Chapman is on for the Board of Public Works meeting yet. I do not know if there's any other members of the public for Board of Public Works. I think the rest are for this item. Oh, I know that, and I'm not there yet. I'll get there, too. So...
Um, yeah, I think we, we should take that first, Mayor, before we go into session.
So, let's go back to item seven and eight, which were the amendments for the BRIN project. No, six and seven, sorry. And then, well, we can adjourn into closed session if we want to after the... But then we have to do public comments, and then we could adjourn into closed session if we want to do that. Is there anything you'd share before closed session, Director Schrader?
Would, would you like to have, uh, the developer, Representative Kip Golden, present?
It's... Alderman Savannick?
I think what we need to do is, uh, take the, um, public comments first, and then go to those items because we're going to be going into closed session. And I don't want, how is, how is anyone from the public gonna know how long that meeting's gonna be? I know, it's really up to the council what they wanna do. I'm just thinking if there's probably only one or two people that might wanna have a comment, they don't wanna wait. Who knows, that meeting in closed session could go for another half hour or longer.
Sure, we have Mr., we have Mr. Chapman on as well, so, um...
May I, may I, may I offer a suggestion? Uh, I, I think it would be, um, prudent to review what Items 6 and 7 are about in general terms for members of the public who are watching, and then go to public comments, and then recess to Board of Public Works, uh, because we wanna keep going with Public Works and be able to record that and finish the evening with the closed session.
And I'm fine with that, if everyone else is fine.
I'll second that. I'll second that.
Sure.
I agree with that. I agree.
Director Schrader, did you want?
Mayor, I think we should, maybe, uh, we could call Mr. Chapman when the Board of Public Works starts, and then Mr. Chapman could, uh, uh, attend a meeting for, for time's sake, or that might be an hour from now, so I don't know why we, we couldn't call him.
Would you like us to do that, Mr. Chapman?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine by me.
Well, what's your phone number, Mr. Chapman?
So, it's, uh, 920 213 9458.
Okay, we'll give you a call once we get back to that item.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, item 6 and 7, Director Schrader, did you want to give us a brief update on those two items?
Uh, as I stated, Representative the Developer, uh, Kip Golden is here. If you'd like to hear from him to see where the project is at, um, and I can clean up or add into anything if there's no objection.
Sounds good. Mr. Golden?
I am here. Uh, first off, uh, thanks, Sam. Thanks, Mayor. I, uh, also wanted to thank a few people at the city. Uh, a lot of work has gone into this project behind the scenes, uh, certainly with the Public Works, with Cory, Adam, and Laura. Uh, and obviously Pamela had a lot to do with, uh, this as well. So, uh, also wanted to say, uh, thank you to your council, uh, for, for your patience. I know this has taken longer than any of us had wanted it to. Um, the underwriting for the senior, uh, lender and the PACE financing took, uh, certainly, uh, longer than we thought it would. Um, and obviously the W C grant, uh, took a little bit longer than we wanted it to as well. Uh, but I am happy to tell you guys that we are there. We are actually, at the end, we are where we need to be. Uh, we are ready to rock and roll. Uh, just a few things here that we have to get, uh, taken care of, and, uh, we'll be, uh, we'll be kicking off. Um, we do have the commitment letters. Uh, Sam has copies of those from both our Covantage, our senior lender, and Greenworks, uh, who is our PACE lender. Um, and then also we do have, uh, communication, or at least, uh, um, verification from the grant from WDC that we're pretty confident we will be getting that, uh, that grant for, uh, for, from WDC. Uh, we have also paid all the public utilities that need to be moved, uh, relocated. Uh, that includes Manashe Water and Electric, AT&amp;T, Charter, and We Energies. Um, we've also completed the testing and asbestos abatement for, uh, both Seven Takeo and 13 Main. So, they are, uh, ready to demo, uh, as soon as we can get We Energies out there to, uh, um, to disconnect the, uh, the gas on those. But those, uh, have been paid. They've been paid for a couple of weeks now, so we're just waiting for them to schedule to get out there to, uh, to, uh, so that we can demo those buildings. Obviously, we also have to close on those buildings. Uh, talking with Sam, our CSM got, uh, recorded, uh, last Friday. Uh, we got a copy of it back, uh, yesterday, or today, excuse me. Um, so we're, uh, we're pushing to hopefully close, uh, on both Seven Takeo and 13 Main on, uh, on Thursday of this week. Uh, I am out on Friday, um, so I'm hoping to push it for Thursday, otherwise it'll have to be Monday or Tuesday of next week. But again, we're still waiting for, uh, We Energies, and we have no clarification as far as when they're gonna get out there to, to disconnect that, uh, the gas. But, uh, we're ready on, uh, as soon as they do. Um, also wanted to mention that we are, uh, uh, we have set our groundbreaking, uh, ceremony, um, for next week, Wednesday, at 1:30 on-site. Uh, we'd love everybody to be there, uh, for that. Uh, we, uh, will obviously, we're gonna be outside, and we'll certainly take, uh, social distancing and everything as far as the, uh, the pandemic to ensure, uh, everybody's safety on that, but we'd love everybody to be a, be a part of that. Um, last couple of things, uh, I know there's been some talk as far as, uh, that we, you know, that we, we're, we're getting the land for a dollar. Um, so why would there be any additional cost, uh, pertaining to that? I just wanna unders, I just wanna make sure everybody understands that we're certainly getting a portion of the land for a dollar. Uh, but we are paying 150,000, uh, towards the land. Um, one a private property, one, uh, the city-owned property now. Uh, we've also stuck 110,000 into relocating all the utilities that are in Center Street, um, in the cul-de-sac at the bottom. Um, we're also, uh, did take care of all the asbestos and the testing, which is another, uh, um, uh, 40 to 50,000 dollars, uh, and then we're also demoing. So we do have about 350, 400,000 dollars that we do have invested in the property, uh, before we're even starting to build in construction. Um, a few other things is we are also, uh, um, constructing the parking lot, which is for public use during the day, I believe, as in the developer's agreement. Uh, we're, uh, responsible for maintaining that. Uh, obviously, our people will be using that as well, um, so we have certainly no problem with that. Um, the other thing is your, uh, uh, storm sewer, uh, or the city storm sewer, which we are certainly connecting into, uh, but I know that is a, uh, the storm sewers for a larger area than just our area. Um, that is underneath our property, which certainly, uh, is great for the city. Um, the other thing is we'll be paying taxes for that, so that's, that's a good thing for the city, uh, on that end of it as well. So I, uh, uh, it was a great collaboration between, uh, uh, the city and this partnership. Um, the only thing is we, uh, uh, just recently, as of last week or two weeks ago, we kinda knew something was there. We just didn't know how much was there as far as we came into the contaminated soil that's on the south of our property. Um, they went back out and did some additional testing in the last couple of weeks, and they came up with a quantity of how much contamination. It's foundry sand. Uh, the great thing is, it's, it's not a deal breaker, uh, but there's certainly cost to that. So what happens typically is when we dig out a site, we can take that fill to any fill site, uh, we can dump it. Now, we have to bring that fill uh, to a landfill and pay tipping fees, um, to a landfill, as well as additional testing and monitoring while, while we're on the site. Um, we were, uh, under the impression that there might be some in the storm sewer area that you guys would be, uh, um, uh, responsible for obviously digging up and, and removing. Uh, we have since, at least from our indications, is there is none in that area, so there won't be any more additional cost to the city. Uh, it's strictly in the, the area where we're doing our building, uh, construction. Uh, obviously, as you, everybody knows, uh, this project's been tight from day one. Um, when we, uh, when we took this over in, uh, um, late fall last year, uh, we've done our best to, uh, to push things along as quickly as we can. Uh, but obviously, since then, costs have, uh, risen dramatically, um, with the, with the pandemic going on and in the, the shortness of trying to get our material uh, to the site. So, uh, it's only made our numbers tighter, um, so that's why we've come back and asked, uh, the council if they would consider, uh, helping us with the contaminated soil, uh, from the project. Uh, now, this is just an estimate. There could be more, uh, there, or there could be less. Um, we're certainly willing to take the risk. If there's more there, we will come back to the council asking for any more, and we're willing to, if there's less there, to not, uh, to, uh, to obviously not take, not have to pay for, uh, more than, than that's actually there. So, uh, just some considerations, uh, we'd, uh, love your support on this, uh, to help out the development. But like I said, we are, we're ready to rock and roll, and this is the last thing besides, uh, closing on the property and, and getting all those things completed on, uh, hopefully this week, yeah.
Also, if I turn my mic on when I ask you if you wanna add anything. Sorry.
Uh, yeah, and I was just gonna add, uh, so again, we have two agenda items. Uh, one is the environmental contingency. Um, that is a request, I guess, from, uh, the development group or the city to, uh, chip in, uh, to assist in that additional environmental cost, as, uh, Kip Golden had noted. Uh, the second item is the Third Amendment to the Development Agreement. Uh, again, the, the financial, uh, side of things, the financial documents have been committed. So basically, uh, they have signed documents that says the, the banks are going to lend the funds, um, but there's certain conditions on those that have to be cleaned up, and a few of those are, is what we're looking at, uh, cleaning up within the development agreement, um, including, uh, officially assigning the BRIN LLC name to the development agreement. So again, we did that by motion previously, but this officially puts it in the amendment, um, updating the, uh, the construction timelines, um, as we, where we're at today. Um, again, and just kinda keep pushing, uh, a few of those things along. Uh, staff did also, uh, discuss as part of that contingency, the financing, um, commitments cannot close until they have all of their conditions met. One of those conditions is the WDC, um, uh, CDI or Community Development Investment Grant, uh, to actually have approval and a contract in hand. That could take, uh, a few more weeks, uh, could possibly up to a month to, uh, to really nail that down. So, uh, we did add, uh, an optional, uh, thing in for the common council to consider. It's a CDI coverage. Um, and basically what that states is if the, if the grant is denied, um, the city would pay an additional 250,000 through the tax increment that is created, um, from the project, um, to that, to the development group, um, in this stage. Again, we are very confident in this grant, um, but nothing is a guarantee in this world. So, um, again, that would move the project and the financing along and take care of that contingency upon, in addition to the other things that are noted. Uh, but really, uh, like Kip Golden had said, there's, there's been a ton of, ton of work on the backend by, by their group, uh, by city staff. Um, and we are really pushing to, uh, to get, get this project going, because, uh, we've been talking about it for a while.
Does anyone have questions for either Director Schrader, Mr. Golden, Mr., um, Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Director Schrader, in the, um, let's see, the Third Amendment to the agreement, uh, on number 11 is what you just referenced, the section being, uh, proposed to be added about the CDI coverage from the city, and, um, is this specific provision one that has been part of past development agreements, uh, that the city has been a part of?
In, in similar sense, um, not specifically this exact language, um, but both the One Manashe Center, uh, as well as the Third Street Market had similar language within it. Um, the, uh, the One Manashe, or, uh, the, excuse me, the Third Street Market actually had a separate, um, payment schedule, so, um, if, if it was approved, they had, you know, a $27,000 annual payment. If it wasn't approved, the, the annual payment was like $49,000. So, um, again, there was coverage in both. Um, this is a little bit more specific to exactly, um, exactly that coverage payment. Um, but again, we are, we are fairly confident. We just want to, uh, provide the whole project and the banks and the lenders and the public, um, you know, the comfort that, that we're doing everything we can do to get this project going, um, including this coverage as, as recommended.
Thank you for that. I, I mean, to be perfectly honest, when I saw that in, in the amendment, um, it caught me off guard, and I had a lot of questions about it. Um, given that when we, um, talk about what the, what the city already has invested in that property on the project, which is uh, upwards of $2 million, I believe, uh, with from demolition to performance incentives, buying properties, it all starts to add up. Um, so I, I questioned that, and when I learned that that particular language or concept has been part of past development agreements, um, that did make me feel better about it, although I really hope the CDI grant comes through, and I'll put that on you to make sure that gets done. Thank you.
Anything else that anyone wants to talk about in an open session yet? Won't see anyone else, so we'll move on down to public comments. There's anyone who wishes to make a comment at this time? We would accept those now. Mrs. Taylor?
Thank you. Sandra, John, Taylor.
Thank you. Sandra DeGron Taylor, five twenty-five Broad Street. I realize it's already three hours in, but I did want to make a few comments regarding items that have already been on the agenda. Uh, first of all, regarding the Landman, Landmarks facade grant. While as a taxpayer, I'm not thrilled with the idea that we are expanding, uh, the application project to include all sides of the building. Um, to me, I still look at it as this is a private investment in a private ownership building, and it's really not encumbered upon the public to have to support that. But I do appreciate Alderman Sabinik's, um, amendment that clearly defined that it, it eliminated the gray area as far as a gathering space, and that the rear facade could be included. Prior to his amendment, it, it was gray and it was confusing, and it was left up to interpretation. So on that matter, I, it's much cleaner than it was before. Um, regarding the COVID memorandum, I appreciate Alderman Nichols postponing this due to the fact that one thing that was not mentioned was that the vast majority of individuals who either have not previously qualified at sixty-five or older or will not be qualified because they're not a teacher or a healthcare provider or emergency personnel and don't have a pre-existing condition. The vast majority of the general public will not even be eligible for vaccination until May first. That doesn't mean that they'll get one. Um, according to President Biden, his goal is July fourth, that maybe people can gather again for the Fourth of July. So while I understand the mayor's eagerness to get people back into the council chambers, you have to remember that there are members of the public who are not even going to be eligible until May first. And when the mayor mentioned that nothing was mandatory, he did make it mandatory for the public to appear in person at the plan commission meetings. Then, on to, um, an item on the agenda where you approve the purchase, uh, for the R D A to purchase the property on Manitowoc Road. What was lacking in the agenda was that the council approved it without the R D A having a project plan. Just to make it clear, if if you would not have approved it, the R D A could not have purchased it independently because they do not have a plan for that project. The attorney slightly hinted at it, but it was not made clear to you as a council. Um. There are a few other items. I guess I'm just going to leave it at that. I still would like the mayor to post available appointments and vacancies on board on the agenda. He just made another reappointment tonight. Um, it would be nice to make that available to the public, and I will hold any comments on the BRIN property. I too am excited that this project goes forward. I think it would be wonderful for the city and especially the downtown. I just hope we don't encounter any more hiccups along the way. And thank you again, Alderman Nichols, for rearranging this so that, um, the public can listen in tonight and then not have to stay for the closed session. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? I don't see anyone else. If there is a motion to recess, I would accept that. I do have Mr. Chapman's number. I don't know if Mr., if Alderman Langdon would want to rearrange that agenda too, so that he won't have to be up until, I don't know how late, and put that item first on the Board of Public Works. I can call him as well.
So you're going to go into, you're asking to go have a recess to go into the Board of Public Works?
Yes.
So we're going to hold off and so for that one individual, but we're gonna?
Well, do you want to do it the other way? That's why Alderman Nichols.
Don't, don't, I, I, it seems like you're jumping through hoops for, uh, this other individual, and we have Kip and, and the developers here too, so I mean, I don't know. Well, we got the board.
A little nervous is once people get off, they're going to meeting, they have a hard time getting back on, so once we go to closed session, this meeting goes away, and then we go into the other one, and then we have to come back.
Okay.
And I'm worried that everyone's not going to be able to get back on.
So Mayor, at this time, I'll move for a, uh, recess for six minutes.
Well, recess to Board of Public Works, I guess.
Public Works, but also to give us six minutes before the Board of Public Works.
Yeah, I'll second. Randy, start the clock. See you at eight-twenty-three, or at nine-twenty-three.
There you go.
Nine-twenty-three. Aye.
We got a vote. We got a vote.
I heard, uh, is, is all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, okay. Mark? Before you leave, do you want me to call Mr. Chapman and tell him we're going to start with him?
Uh, you know, Mayor, I'm going to make a motion to, uh, turn this over to Plan Commission. I, we, there's, there's some language in here that, uh, I don't, I don't really, I don't like at all. Uh, one is, it says the city has also approved a major renovation forgivable loan to the.
Yeah, we're not in the meeting yet.
You know, we shouldn't be talking about this now. I'm just wondering, do you want to put it at the top of your agenda, or do you want to let it keep going?
You're the chair. You're the chair. All you want to do. I want to go, I want this to go back to Plan Commission.
No, no, no. When do you want to dis, when do you want to discuss it on your agenda? Because it's yes, it's at the bottom of the agenda, isn't it? If I remember right?
Yeah, you, so we can move that to the top. All right.
Do you want me to call him and tell him that we're going to start with his?
Yeah.
And then we'll go back to the other items.
Yep, okay, I'll work.